Good evening, everyone and all those tuning in from home as we sort of begin to populate the Zoom attendees list for those in the room and for those logging in remotely. My name is Rob Chappetti, I'm the chairman of the Newbury Court Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to the agenda evening of the Newbury Court ZBA of October 11th, 2022. It's a few minutes after seven, our appointed hour is 7:00 PM on published notices. And I'm going to take a moment, establish our roll call, establish a quorum, designate for purposes of the record who will be our voting members this evening. Introduce the board, then we will get right into the, the public hearings this evening. We have a packed agenda, so we will, we're going to move through each of these as they appear on the, on the agenda. For those that are watching from home, if you simply go to the Newbury Court ZBA website or just Google Newbury Court ZBA, you will come upon the, the webpage for the zoning board of appeals and you can click on the agenda. And there is also a link right there for every one of the materials that we're going to be reviewing this evening. Every material or piece of documentation that we have before us or that we've been provided with, every member of the public also has access to by simply clicking and following along. Notwithstanding that, Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, will be publishing on the Zoom screen for those watching remotely, everything that's being referenced by the applicant in real time as the applicant is presenting it. So even if you can't find the link, just simply look at your screen, you'll see what's being referenced and discussed. So without further ado, I'm going to take a moment, introduce the members of the DVA. We will do a roll call and as I mentioned, we'll establish a quorum and we will get to the business of the evening. Sorry, just a moment. Okay, calling the role of the Newbury Court Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Ken Swanton. Here, Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Walter Channan.
Here.
Gregory Bennett.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Scow. Not here, or at least not here yet, and Ms. Patricia. We have one, two, three, four, five, six members of the ZBA present. That establishes our legal quorum, which is our ability to vote on business before the ZBA, as is part of the rules as well as the zoning. Here in Massachusetts and in Newbury Court, we are required to designate which among our members in attendance are the five designated voting members. And I believe unless there is any member, is there, there's no member that's recusing themselves on any application this evening? I have then 11 prospects due. Okay. So for purposes of all, so the voting members this evening will be on all applications except for 11 Purchase Street. It will be myself, Rob Chappetti, Stephen Delisle, Ken Swanton, Walter Channan, Gregory Bennett, and on the application of 11 Purchase Street, it will be Rob Chappetti, Ken Swanton, Walter Channan, Gregory Bennett, and Patricia Pettit. Those are our established five voting members and that's the, the flex that will happen with respect to one application before it's this evening on 11 Purchase Street. Having established our quorum and designated our five voting members, I'll just take a moment and introduce the board. My name again is Rob Chappetti, I'm the chairman of the ZBA. To my left is Mr. Ken Swanton, vice chair. To his left, Mr. Gregory Bennett, a member. To his left, Mr. Ken Swanton, I'm sorry. Yes.
You can.
Sorry, Mr. Bud Cherry. To prosper him is Mr. Mr. Ken Swanton and to my immediate right is Patricia Pettit. And I'm not sure if we're still expecting Lynn Scow. Did I get some of them?
Yes, that's me three times.
So yeah. Sorry. What, you know, it's funny, it's like you guys throw, everybody's throwing me off when I have this, this weird table. I'm going to pass the mashed potatoes and this will, so we, if, if Lynn Scow comes, we will, we will fold her into the proceedings and make that clear for anyone who's watching or following along via Zoom. So we have no matters that are free public hearings, so we're going to jump right into our first application. And the first application before us is a continuation from the hearing of September 27th, 2022. It's the application by applicants Francesca and Ryan Burke, heir of Lisa Mead, Attorney Mead, Mead Cap Talvin and Costa LLC, 26 Eagle Street. The application is a special permit for non-conformities, 22-23 construction addition to the structure, extending the primary front yard setback and adding more than 500 square feet to a non-conforming lot, Attorney Mead.
Thank you very much. I have to smile because it is an odd configuration.
It's, it's, yeah.
It's challenging. It's pleasant, let's just say it's pleasant. It's Lisa Mead, Mead, Tom and Costa, 30 Green Street, on behalf of the applicant Francesca and Ryan Burke, and Francesca is with me this evening, and Eileen Graff is the architect on the project and she too is with me. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. So this project is at 26 Eagle Street. It's located in the R2 zoning district in the DCOD overlay district. It's a single story, excuse me, a single family home and we're proposing to put on a single story addition with a porch. The structure was built in around 1850 according to the district data sheets and the Form B for the property and 1869 according to the assessors' records. It's on a corner lot with its primary front yard as Carter Street and the secondary front yard as Eagle Street. If you look at the house, it looks like, before we changed the definitions in the zoning, that the front is Eagle Street. So however, the, the longest length is Carter Street, so that's the primary front yard. The setback requirements are 25 feet on the front and 10, and the rear, and 10 feet on the sides. Of course, this has two front yards. The minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet and required frontage is 90 feet. The property is non-conforming as it has 8,829 square feet of area and both front yard setbacks are also non-conforming. The primary front yard on Carter Street is setback 6.7 feet and the secondary front yard on Eagle Street is setback eight, excuse me, 11.3 feet. It's conforming in all other respects and as you'll see in a little bit, it's a pretty big lot for the Carter Street, Eagle Street area, particularly Carter Street. But the proposal includes adding over 500 square foot floor area to the structure and because it has non-conforming area, we require a special permit. So if you go to the next slide, please. So just to orient you, this is from part, excuse me, Eagle Street, traveling west. And you can see the side of the house there. Next slide, please. And this is the back corner of the backyard. The addition we're going to talk about in a little bit is going to go essentially over where that existing deck is and out a little bit and then the porch will extend a little bit to the right and kind of fill in that gap or that corner where the existing home and the earlier addition is, which by the way, is probably close to part of the original structure, does appear on the early sandborne maps, which we're going to go over in a little bit. Next slide, please. And then here's another view of the backyard. Next slide, please. And this is directly in the back. The addition, which Eileen will go over in a little bit, is going to step in from the side of this lot line, so we don't extend or intensify the side yard, but we do extend it a little bit, but it will be stepped in. Next slide, please. And again, this is a front corner of the house, this section of the house will not be impacted. Next slide, please. And this is across the street at the corner of Carter and Eagle Street. And next slide. And this is the Carter Street side and so the addition is going to go where that fence is on the left, except for it will be stepped in a little bit. Next slide, please. And this is looking up Carter as you're traveling toward High. The addition will be in the back, behind that fence and actually stepped in. The application requires a special permit for non-conformities for extending the primary front yard setback on Carter Street. The structure will be 7.9 feet from the primary front yard boundary on Carter Street where the existing is 60, is 6.7. Additionally, the proposed addition will add 521 square feet on the lot that has none, that is non-conforming for area as I indicated. Otherwise, all of the dimensional requirements continue to be met, albeit except for the front yard setback, which we're not impacting in the lot area. The DCOD will not be triggered as we're removing less than 25% of the existing walls. In fact, we're removing 14%. And if you could go to the next slide, please. Oops, sorry, I missed this. This is going up Carter Street. And next, please. And then this is across on Eagle Street. And then we have a sandborne map. And you can see the existing structure from 1894. There was a later added, there was earlier addition in the back there, I'm not really sure what that was, but you can see the, the addition that exists right now, which we're not taking down. Next slide, please. And I've already gone over this and the next slide. So here's the site plan and I think if you could blow up the plan itself a little bit, Caitlin. You can see in the lighter line, you can see the existing deck. So you can see we kind of follow the deck around on the outer left-hand edge and in the rear. Then you can see the line of the deck that comes to meet the house and you'll see how the addition actually extends a little bit out from that. And beyond that, you'll see the proposed enclosed porch in the rear. You can see that nothing in the front of those gardens and that parking area along Eagle Street are being impacted. And the next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So what, what the proposal is here, if you could see on the top two drawings, is representing the existing structure as it is now. As Lisa had pointed out, the, the structure that, and you saw in photographs as well, that piece that you see on the back is, is part of the original structure and that will stay intact. And as you look to the bottom two drawings, our proposal was to add living space on the first floor level and in a one-story aspect that will help provide modern day needs of mudroom, of kitchen, et cetera, and taking the approach that it is more of a sunroom in feel, but in fact, it's, as mentioned, kitchen needs inside. So you can see that that skirts in front of that sort of two and a half lower level two-story there and that two in front of it and as well as to the right of it as we view it from this direction. The lower roof, flat roof section on the far right closer to the tile block on the bottom, it represents the screen porch that will, will be added as well. If we could go to the next slide. Thank you. Likewise, from the rear, on the top left is the existing and, and on the bottom left is the proposed. The, as, as mentioned, that if you looked at the bottom left drawing, that right side of the house is the side that travels along Carter. And so that is where you can best see that the step in with the addition, it steps in two feet from that plane of the existing structure. And then on the bottom right side, you can also see that sort of one-story piece is actually that, that two-foot jog that I'm talking about, that corner board that you see on the existing structure, that next plane of the addition pushes in two feet and then the screen porch as well. And if, if, if I could also just point out, the drawing above that top right, that lower level there is to represent the existing deck. So I want to sort of call that out again as that's the area in which we were putting the structure. So that when we look back to the site plan, you could see that it was our intent not to, to creep more than that. And if I could actually, do you mind, Caitlin, going back to one slide prior? What I wanted to point out there on the bottom left drawing is the addition to the right of the original structure is extending into the yard there. You can see it at the bottom left and that is extending nine feet towards the yard. Again, it's a large parcel for this area. So the, the change in footprint is, is relatively minimal for such a large lot, but we did want to bring sort of a different, a different roof line there so that we could connect between the two structures without causing conflict to windows above, et cetera. We, we want to wrap it with similar windows, that's what's in there now, with Marvin lines, is that correct? So high-end windows there with some paneling below. For, for most of the building, it's from this, these two sides, you don't see any siding, but yet when we go to the next slide, Caitlin, back to that one, you see a little bit on the streets, Carter Street side, and that would be quadrants to match the existing structure.
If you could go back up to the site plan in a minute, Caitlin, I think, again, just to highlight Eileen's comment about the jog, if you will, in the back, the two feet in. So you can see the proposed addition in the dark line coming off that rear original addition at the house and then even further into the yard, you'll see this, the screen and porch. So it certainly is not on the same plane as you travel down Carter Street. Obviously there, it's hard to see in those flat drawings, but it certainly steps significantly back. And then you could go to the rendering, perhaps, that's.
Correct, yes. So here is a rendering seen from the Eagle Street, across the street, looking towards the north. And you can see that sunroom feel of the one-story addition, they're wrapped in the back corner of the, of the, of the structure. And that is again, deeper in the property to emphasize, you know, that the sort of impact, it is a wider opening between the existing house and that garage structure, but everything on the original structure stays, stays pure and it's existing form. So with that, I will pass it back to Lisa.
Thank you. So the two criteria the board need to consider when determining whether or not to grant a special permit for non-conformities is whether any new addition of a new non-conformity will be created. In this instance, no new non-conformity will be created. The Carter Street side primary front yard setback will be lengthened, but not to the same extent, it's stepped out further, two feet further than the existing setback. And the next criteria is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Here, the proposed addition adheres to the dimensional requirements apart from that carry-down on Carter Street and stylistically fits in with the main portion of the structure as Eileen has described. The structure will remain conforming to side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, open space, lot coverage, building height and parking requirements. It's a note which we're going to show in a minute, if you could go to the mind maps up there just for a second, you can see the size of this lot as compared to the other single-family home lots in the area. The lot is comparably larger than the immediate neighborhood and the gardens and the view of Eagle Street will remain largely unchanged, but for the view of the small portion of the proposed addition, we think that the rendering helps show how that, if you could go back to the rendering, Caitlin, the rendering shows how that addition is at the back and away from certainly the front of the house and doesn't disrupt those two main views of the home. Again, the structure that's in proposed addition will continue to neither be the largest nor the smallest in the neighborhood. There are many properties that appear to exceed lot coverage maximums and open space maximums where this property will remain well in conformity with 17% lot coverage proposed, where 25% is the maximum and set, excuse me, 74.6% open space where 40% is the minimum required. The use remains a single-family home. There are multifamily homes surrounding this, as you know, up on the corner of Carter and High and then the, the strip of homes, townhouses, if you will, down Carter as well, a number of two-family homes as well on the Carter Street, Warren Street area. Taking that onto consideration and noting that the term substantially means to a great or significant extent, we believe that the board has enough to find that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. You have received four abutters letters. There are three, the immediate abutters, which are the one on Carter Street immediately to the north and then the two on, one on Eagle Street immediately to the east and then one down on Warren Street and then the other one on Eagle Street. So the three immediate abutters and then an additional one have provided letters of support. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Mead, for that presentation. So if we're to go further, we'll close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. And Miss Sullivan will put up the slide for anyone remote. And we will not necessarily be taking public comment in pro or con, just simply public comment. As I think everyone in this room knows, it is, we just need name and address so that Ms. Joy can record that in a minute. Anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application in the room, we'll go within the room first. Anyone seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in connection with the application online? Caitlin, I can't see, I can't see any.
No hands, it's fine.
Okay. And I'm having trouble just seeing the attendees that are logged in. Can you open that screen? I just want to see, but yeah, to the right. Just down that where it says attendees.
You can see it on my hair.
That's it, okay, great. That's, all right, I told you to consider working this and something. Seeing no hands either on time or in the room. Once going twice, we will close public comment section and go into questions from the board. We'll begin by left with Mr. Swanton.
Thank you. I, could you put up slide eight? Now I'm trying to lay over this area and run the street, had it right on the street go basically. And this is obviously a very big lot, very pretty house.
Thank you.
But I've always thought of this house as on Eagle Street and when you look at it from this angle, it kind of looks like the front of the street. I don't know, it is 26 Eagle Street.
Yeah, right.
There's no door on one side.
So the, probably six years ago, right, the, the definition of front yard change.
Longer.
That's right. So the, the Carter Street side is longer, so that becomes the primary front yard, but Eagle Street is still a front yard.
All right.
So that's how you determine your size.
I always thought of that houses.
No, for sure. Right, that's definitely the front of the house on Eagle.
The driveway gets kind of closer.
Right, and the other main entrance is on the Eagle Street side of the driveway. If you are correct, Ms. Swanton.
Well, that kind of leads me on to my next question, which if you go to the site plans, would you, Caitlin, could you put a site plan also? Zoom in on the site plan there. You know, you know, we got a lot of proposals for different on the back of the building. You bring it in, Attorney Mead. And we often approve them when they're kind of out back. The challenge here is you're on a corner lot, so out back is on Carter Street. I guess my question is, you're at 7.9 feet, I think, at that new corner, it's harder to read, the screen's a little blurry, but, and very small. But you have a very big lot with a lot of room and you're only 3 feet, one inch away from, I think a 10-foot setback there, have you, which would have less impact on the street line to have it more like more traditional side lot setback of 10 feet. I realize it's not a side lot, they're both front lots, I realize, it's a really important to be 25 feet back, I'm not suggesting that. But I guess what I'm wondering, if you consider it being not quite so close to the road, that you're standing a pretty long building right along the road. We don't really get a lot of it. So that's, that's my question. Have you looked at, what would it take to be entered off rather than 7.9?
Right, so that's, it's a good question. So what was important in this sort of integration of the addition with the existing is that that little back rear nub, we'll call it, is the existing kitchen space. And we knew we wanted to integrate that living space. So the more we push into the yard, the more it makes it a sort of cumbersome connection and use of that room. And currently in its layout, it really does absorb that and it's still part of the kitchen, but it gets expanded. You start to, you start to shift it and it, it just makes it more challenging in the use. Definitely a good question, but, but two more feet, pushing it back of a one-story seems, you know, I understand your point for the Carter Street elevation, but actually currently there's a pretty large fence there, you know, I, I feel like for a, for a one-story flat roof roughly, you know, 11 feet tall, it's sort of 12 feet tall, it's a pretty minimal presence on the, on that experience from the sidewalk. And so what we, what we want.
All right, Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, I guess somewhat of a, I guess a lot, I mean, I, I think we, it's very helpful to have some victorial evidence of the houses that are advised, so I can make a fair assessment of this scale and mass of the structure and the addition as it relates to the other homes and the neighborhood. So I just ask you to talk about that a bit.
Sure, if we can go to, I'm trying to think if there's some Eagle Street shots here. Why should we go to the photographs from the beginning? Yeah, why don't you start wherever you want to start. So you see the house across the street, Mr. Bennett? And the one directly beside it, you can see it's got a pretty good size addition, it's two stories, it runs off the back and well into the road, excuse me, well into the lot. Why don't you pick a next slide? There you go, try that one. So there's another view and you can see this house is down Eagle Street. Mr. Bennett, they're also two-story, pretty good size. You can see in the backyard in this one, you see the side of the house behind it, immediately adjacent on Carter Street. I don't know if we have another slide that has that picture coming up Carter Street. Why don't you just start at the beginning of these photos? You can see across the street on Carter Street, you see the, I think that's actually a two-family, that gray one. Next slide. And then you can see the, again, you can see the house to the left of this, it's also on Carter Street. Next slide, please. And that's that same house on Carter Street with the two dormers on the top. Next slide, please. You see a little bit in the back, Carter Street drops a little bit as you go downhill starting there. So I'm not sure, is that, that's a two-story house in the back, so a two-story house?
That's a two-story house. It's one story and then the eighth story is the second.
Yeah. The next slide, please. There you can see a little bit better view, that, we looked at that a little bit ago, you can see on down Eagle Street. Next slide, please. And that's a little tougher, next slide. That's a little broader view, I think we looked at that a minute ago. That how, the house across the street there on Carter, that runs all the way up to High. It's actually a group of, a multiple group of different townhomes that are all connected running up to High. Next slide, please. There we go, there's that, you can see that. And the next slide. There you go, that's a little broader view from the street. But I'll keep that in mind for our next presentations, to try to get some broader views of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, Ms. Chan.
Yeah, thank you. Could you go over the zoning matrix again? I think some of the numbers differed from where you spoke. It's probably a moot point, but.
Is there one in particular you are?
Both the lot coverage and the open space.
So Caitlin, could you just blow up Everett's plan?
I mean, it's just.
So the open space, minimum open space is 40 and it's 71.4.
Yeah.
And the lot coverage minimum is 25 and it's existing is 14.4 and the proposed is 20.2.
Okay, so those are the correct numbers that are on my matrix.
Yes.
I think during your presentation, some of the numbers were different.
All right. But those are certainly correct.
Perfect. And then the next one was, and I think it's obvious on the drawing, but it was hard to see on the sketches, is the screen porch stepped in from both sides? So in other words, it's narrower than.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, if you could blow up the site.
So if we were to look at it from the, I guess, the rear of the house.
Correct.
It's smaller, it's subordinate to the main.
Subordinate to the.
Uh, that's all I have, Chair, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Yell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think, um, this graph, I think you touched on this, the fence will remain. That's on that Carter Street side. And then just a question out of curiosity, how are you gonna move the water off those flat roofs?
Well, when Anytime there are these flat roofs, there's still pitch to it. So it will be rubber, but we will, we will uh pitch them away, well Away to a, a good drainage point, uh, that's not dropping on people's heads, so it'll be intentional on where, where it's coming down, but it will pitch. Have pitched to it.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And Ms. Grant?
Um, yes, I'm also a corner lot curious, but I saw the August drawings. And I'm really intrigued with how you solve that problem of not having the height and the massing right there. And I know you're, now you're adding five hundred and twenty one per feet. Do you happen to remember how many per feet were to be added in the August plan?
Well, it was more than five hundred because we were still having to get a special permit, right? So.
So was it really close, probably? I don't need to know this, I'm just really intrigued by, again, I think you solved the problem there and You know, that left side, is it left side, a left was going from forty to twenty nine, and now it's going from forty To sixteen point one, but I'm imagining that's maybe less intrusive on the street space and maybe on that fifty one prospect. So I think it's a really interesting.
Eileen and Francesca worked really hard.
Yeah.
At revising these drawings.
Cause I, when I saw the August plan, I, I anticipated some Pushback maybe either from a butter or the If it's comparable, that's good, it's very intriguing to me and it's, it is a lovely house.
And we feel very strongly that look Completely historically with the house and not intrusive to the neighbors, the neighborhood, so Tried to make that a focus.
So I don't have the number with me, but, but it would have been over six, over five hundred.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Peck, uh, I don't have any additional questions other than what's been asked and answered, so thank you. Um, and unless there's any other questions from any members of the ZBA, I will close that portion of the public hearing. And we'll move into deliberations again, uh, as the board knows, um, this is a special permit for non-conformity, so Our deliberations kindly uh govern them in and around section ninety two, the criteria for special permit. But with that, we begin with Mr. Swan.
Oh, well, as it said, uh, there are no, none of importance, um. So that comes down to whether this is substantially more detrimental Than what's there, um. You know, my primary concern is around what I brought up about the uh Extending this long building on Carter Street, um, you know, through the wonders of Google Maps, there I can see the other neighbors Looking down the street there, and a lot of the houses are very small in that area, and, and we'll have a new map. On the other hand, it is one story, has a flat roof, and there's a high fence. And that does certainly mitigate it. It's also quite tasteful, but we're not supposed to judge it.
It helps though.
So, I, I'm sort of At this point, unless I hear something very different to my colleagues, that means otherwise, I'm totally leaning in support of this special permit.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, uh, I agree with Mr. Swan's interpretation, this is a Uh, a large lot, uh, we'll see. I guess the open space and lot coverage are comfortably met here, uh. I too, uh, am impressed with the architectural uh Solution here, as it relates to kind of this uh setback structure. Black roof, I think it integrates and is coherent with Uh, what is uh a very special uh home, for sure. Uh, I, 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 uh I believe that, although, although there is some concern about stretching a structure of this size down First, at, at the end of the day, I, I do not believe that Brings a substantial detriment to the neighborhood and Uh, in fact, given its architectural uh elements, I find it, uh, that is a On balance, uh, fine addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, um, Mr. General.
I think I can say it better. Well, what crap. I also was a little concerned when I first saw the application about, uh, you know, it running down Carter, but back it's one story, it's subordinate to the main building. Even the uh screen porch is subordinate to the tradition, it just flows well, and I, I can support the application.
I would agree, um, with my fellow members here, I think also the, the size of the lot Being as large as it is, and I'm familiar with the neighborhood, and I don't see it as being substantially detrimental, believe me.
Mr. Wild, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would agree also, uh, I think this looks like a really nice project, I would support this. And Ms. Peck?
Likewise, and again, I'm really impressed with the, what you did after August to kind of get that space in without going up.
Thank you, I, I agree with everything my colleagues said, and, and the design is, is really thoughtful and it's coherent, I think I think members of the ZBA said exactly that, uh, and it's nice to see, so the extension doesn't You know, doesn't um raise me eyebrows from my seat, and I think it's all appropriate, massive scale, vernacular and um You know, architectural sort of, and, let's say, so well done, um. And uh, if there's any, any further deliberations, finally? None, uh, we will close the deliberations portion of the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion Uh, to approve by members of ZBA, and if there are any conditions, and we can note, and then actually, before we do that, I just wanna make one note for the record. Uh, as we'll tend to do this every time, but we shouldn't be doing it all along. Um, we wanna make a note on the record that the uh projects, uh, while almost every project may trigger the Street and tree ordinance in the report, uh, we reach out almost every time, though the planning office does, to uh Our acting DPS director, uh, Jamie Goodlow, and in this case, which people would then cite visit. Uh, leads to the existing trees have been recently removed because of um Um, failing health and that there is no replacement required or recommended and that the uh The sidewalks are in good shape, so there's no attention that this board is being asked to take with respect to the sidewalk and tree ordinance. And having known that, um, I'll entertain one.
I'll make a motion. Remove that we approve the special permit for non-conformities for twenty six Eagle Street, which is number twenty two dash twenty three.
Very good, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, motion is made and seconded, and um, it'll be just a moment, we will Call the vote, um, alright, motion's been seconded on the motion to approve, um, calling the vote on Mr. Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yeah.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Wild, yes, exactly. Uh, you know, this, about somebody, I will guess that is one, two, three, four, five, the affirmative, the I sound.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Alright, um, moving now to eleven Purchase Street, this is the application.
Who'd you, did you forget Hale Street?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that, um.
I don't know how it's. Go to that.
The uh next application is, and thank you.
That's.
Is the application of Hale Business Park LLC, chair of Lisa Mead, retail and cost, uh, twenty one Hale Street. Uh, often known as twenty one Malcolm Point Road, this is a variance, uh, it's twenty two that five, constructed An industrial services building within the front yard setback. And uh, that was kind of me.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, me telling a class, uh On behalf of the Hale Business Park LLC, and with me this evening is Craig Lucina and Patrick Ready of the LLC. Also, uh, Tom Hughes, I think I saw him on there, so um, you might wanna Let him in, or however that goes, I'm sure. Um, this is, as um the chair suggested, we're here to request a variance for front yard setback on Hale Street. Um, the proposal is to construct a small industrial services building. I'm gonna wait till, there we go. Then you go on to the next slide. Uh, small industrial service building on a property which consists of over two hundred and ninety thousand square feet of area. The building itself will be two stories, but will have a footprint of only twenty eight hundred and eighty square feet. So total usable space in the building will be fifty five thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. The building will front on the property adjacent to Hale Street, uh, the use is allowed by right. The loc, the structures located within the front yard setback of twenty point one feet, where sixty feet is required due to the president. We're locating it there due to the presence of resource area and buffer zone on the remainder of the lot. Um, the lot being developed, which we're gonna see in a little bit, is lot A three to be created and will include Fifty four thousand five hundred and thirty square feet, where fifty thousand square feet is required And will include two hundred feet of frontage on Hale Street. Um, I just wanna say this before we get to the site plan. The creation of two individual lots out of this one does not impact the wetlands area and the relief that we're seeking, and I'll go over that with you in a minute. We're dividing the lot so that we can convey a portion of the lot to the conservation commission. So whether we were dividing the lot or not, we would still need relief for the front yard setback Due to the twenty five foot no disturb zone directly behind the construction that's going to be happening, which we'll go over in a minute. The remainder of the parcel, um, which will be A four Um, is proposed to be donated to the conservation commission, and it includes two hundred and thirty six thousand three hundred and twenty one square feet. So, uh, the majority of the lot, as you can see, will be going to the conservation commission. The remainder of our lot, the remainder lot, if you will, or the proposed to be developed lot, does meet all other dimensional requirements, the ordinance. So if you could go to the next slide, please. And we've gone over that, so if you go to the next slide. So here, what you can see is the full um property, so this is Malcolm Point Drive, so if you went on Hale Street. Low Street is on your, um, right on this plan, so you're going down Hale Street, you have Malcolm Point Drive. This is the corner of Malcolm Point Drive and Hale Street. As Malcolm Point Drive comes down, it turns. And so this is the corner, you can see the rear of the lot. So the proposed lot that we're creating, um, is up front, and I'm actually gonna get to use my little red pointer. Maybe works. Um, so here's the new lot line right here. So this is the lot we're creating, and this is the remainder lot That goes to the conservation commission, so you can see there's a little piece that's on Hale Street, then it comes down along Malcolm Point Drive. It goes to the conservation commission. Um, if you could, the next slide, please. And here is the lot blown up, now I'm gonna tell you that, um, in a later plan, we're gonna show you where the wetlands resource area is. Um, we haven't had a chance to update the later plan. Um, but you'll see the fire department asked for access all around this property, so we had to add a drive To the right, it doesn't affect our front yard setback. Um, but when I show you the wetlands line, you'll see that that drive doesn't exist, it's where The original plan, which had the building over a little bit. Um, but the fire department wanted an egress on both sides of the building, so we had to add a drive, and so Uh, we filed this um with the board. The applicants have been meeting with the conservation commission, commission on this proposal for well over six months, initially, we did Informally, we met with them, they've gone out to take a site visit, we had a lot of conversations about the lot And how we could at least try to get some use out of the seven acres, so that, um, there would, you know, essentially Uh, Craig and Patrick would have a modicum of use based upon what you could actually do in the industrial park. Um, and that's how we came up with this agreement to try to push it out of the twenty five foot no disturb And um seek a variance, make the building footprint as small as we possibly could, and then Uh, provide the rest of the area to um the conservation commission. Uh, this project will also have to go through site plan review with the planning board. So if the board is so inclined to grant the variance, we'll go back to the conservation commission to make sure they're okay with this second Driveway hats, as it's located, we'll continue that, and then we'll file our site plan review with the planning board to deal with all the site plan review issues. Um. If you could go uh to the next slide, please. Uh, one of the concerns, or not concerns, but one of the things that the Um, that the developers wanted to make sure that they were sympathetic to is that In this area on Hale Street, on the opposite side, we start to have some houses moving down. And so while this is going to be an industrial building, we're facing Hale Street with three doors That you would see on any other kind of residential building and some windows to be respectful of that as well. Um, and the footprint is twenty eight hundred and eighty square feet. So it's not a giant building as compared to other houses in total, if you think about it, so That, and, and when you compare it to the lot itself, it's gonna be small compared to other industrial buildings in the area. Uh, next slide, please, and then here's the rear of it, uh, so you can see the, the rear garages. And uh, the next slide, please. So here is a um, a GIS view of it, so you can see the arrow on the left-hand side where the building is gonna go. Um, and how big is the industrial building, the footprint of the existing, do you know that?
The building?
Yeah.
It's a hundred sixty by a hundred.
Sixty two, the sixteen thousand.
So it's square from the footprint?
It's fourteen thousand.
The foot, the footprint.
Yes.
So the footprint is fourteen thousand on that building, and this footprint is gonna be twenty eight eighty. Right, so you can, I just wanted to show you that from a perspective. Um, in this picture also, you can see um that the um, so There's an upland right here where we're proposing to put the structure. And then the only other upland on this property is this little, there's a piece right back in here That you can't get to from the road because you have to do a crossing. So that's the other hardship back here, so you can't develop this upland here unless you were to come in and buy this property over here and go that way. But this has some significant wildlife habitat in it, which um is one of the reasons the conservation commission Uh, would like, is interested in this proposal. So the only uplands you have are here, which is really pushed, and then this upland back here, which you can't get to. So in accordance with section, if you go to the next slide, please. In accordance with section ten H six, so the zoning ordinance in forty A, section ten, of course. Uh, in order to grant a variance, the board has to find a hardship, in this instance, the hardship is related to the soil condition. Um, as I said, the front portion of the property is the only upland that exists, remainder of the property Is either resource area, wetlands and or buffer zones, or any other protected areas That would need to be significantly impacted in order to access the only remaining upland on the property, which is in that back southeast corner. Soil condition is um, a, uh, excuse me, wetlands are considered a soil condition That would be acceptable to find a variance under. Uh, there's a case of Woodrow versus the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals Where the land court Judge Foster upheld the ZBA grant of a variance allowing The creation of a non-conforming side yard setback, where there, the lot was essentially um covered with um wetlands, and that was the only usable area On the lot. Here, the soil conditions um and exceptional physical situations prevent the applicant From locating the building at the required front yard setback, the property in total, as I said, is Two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and fifty one square feet. Um. The applicant is proposing to use less than a quarter of it for the buildable lot itself, the three quarters will be turned over To the conservation commission. The developed portion of the property is even smaller, the applicant's lot coverage will only be five point three percent on that lot Where thirty percent is allowed by the district. Um, in addition to that, the building itself is gonna be point zero five percent Of the fifty four thousand square foot lot, so it's very small. Um, while there's certainly other wetlands on adjacent parcels in the industrial park. This property is unique, given its size and the fact that the only two upland areas are either At the front, adjacent to Hale Street, within the front yard setback, or that southeast rear portion that's not accessible. If the board were to impose a strict application of the ordinance, the applicant would be deprived Of even the most modicum use of this property and would be unable to use a parcel, which is almost seven acres of land. Alternatively, the natural resources on the site would be significantly impacted if the, if the site could be used at all. The conditions of the property are not the imposition of the applicant, rather they are the wetlands resource area. Um, as I said earlier, dividing the lot in order to convey part of it to the conservation commission does not cause uh this hardship. Finally, if relief is granted, it will not be a special privilege to the applicant. Indeed, here the applicant is trying to modestly use an almost seven acre parcel of land. Um, I guess uh, I would go to the next slide, please. And the next slide. So here is um, the wetlands line, as I said earlier, before we put the driveway in over here. But if you look at this, um, this line right here, this is the twenty five foot no touch. And that truly means no touch, this blue dotted line right here. And so we, there can't be any soil disturbance. So this is storm water right here and that's storm water excavation, and then this is the parking. And so this, the Conservation Commission, you see how close it gets here. That's why this goes up like that. Um, you, we, that's actually something we can't touch. And so that's why you see the building pushed up into the twenty one foot area. I would say, as I've said in my filing, that the travel path is out here and it's actually about forty feet away from the travel path. So even though it's twenty one feet away from the property line, it's about forty feet away from the travel path on Hale Street. Uh, again, it can't be pushed back anymore because it is this twenty five foot no touch zone. That's only one of the, all of these other lines through here. These are all other wetlands lines that we're working through waivers with the uh, Conservation Commission. These are uh, setback buffer zone areas as well, and there's the entire areas buffer zone, the entire lot is the buffer zone. So with that, uh, we've requested the board uh, grant a variance for the setback. Um, in accordance to plan, if you go to the next slide, it might be helpful too, maybe. So here you can see another, this is just another um aerial view of the site, and I think that's, that's probably it um, for right now. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer your questions and uh, we'd request a grant of a variance.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, closing that portion of the public hearing, we will go into public comment. And I will begin with public comment uh, in the room and I'll just go around and see if there's anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application. If so, just make yourself known and give your name and address. Being only those who I know to be in for business of this evening, I don't see members of the public, but going once, going twice, seeing no hands, uh, we'll now go online. Anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application, if you're um, tuning in via Zoom, uh, just kindly raise your hand, we'll recognize you, just give your name and address. Seeing no hands among attendees logged in via Zoom, going once, going twice, um, I will go ahead and close that portion of public hearing. We'll go right into questions from the board and um, uh, we will uh go ahead and uh, just begin questions from the board. Who uh, does anyone, let me do this actually, because we've talked about this in the past, but this, is there any member of the Z B A without we continue to do the same sequence that wishes to speak first, um, in connection with questions. Um, we're gonna put that out there. If not.
Okay, um. Yeah, I this uh, what's on the wall here in green, I guess that's the uh lot today, before it's divided into the two, the part that's going to the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Uh, you show, and and you you make a compelling case that this, you know, one of the things for variance is the soils, uh. And there's a lot of wetlands here. You showed a wetlands map of the uh, small piece of top there in the world. You don't happen to have one that shows the wetlands on the other? Could you just talk to?
Just for you, I have one, Mr. Swan. Um, can you go to the last slide? I think, there we go. So um this is not as pretty and it's before the building, the industrial building that sits right here right now, the fourteen thousand square foot industrial building.
Okay.
So um, the other one's easier to read because it it's in color, right? So here's the uplands in the back I was talking about.
Yeah.
And here's the uplands that we're proposing to put it on.
Yeah.
This is approximately the twenty five foot no touch. And I'm reading this from very far away. Um, and then there's a stream that comes through here like this. Uh, and so everything else is buffer zone and or other wetland resource areas.
So just those two uplands?
Yes.
Two big areas.
This is.
Uplands of the stream, those are all wet as well?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's a very good answer. I'm glad you have that now. Um. You, you mentioned it's two, the parcel you're um giving to the conservation is two hundred and thirty six thousand three hundred and twenty one feet. I tend to think in acres, that's like over five acres.
That's correct.
Um. And just, hey, when you happen to, did you confirm you you heard any thing from the Conservation Commission that they actually want this land? Um. I, I don't know if that's a
Can I, can I answer? So we have, we wouldn't be here if the Conservation Commission, so we've been working with them for a while.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't be here if they didn't want the land, because otherwise uh, we, the project, there's, that doesn't work, right? So they want the land because of a couple of reasons. Um, there's flood storage in here for the industrial park.
Yeah.
Um, that they're gonna be able to use. This upland back here um could be accessed by this property if they bought it to extend this if they wanted. But more importantly, this upland back here has wildlife resources in it, wildlife habitat that is unusual in the park. And so they also want it for that reason. And so that's why um, they're interested in it.
How firm it is the obligation here? I mean, we could give you a variance, they could give you everything and you could just be bought a land.
Well, wouldn't it? Yeah, no, we wouldn't, because the Conservation Commission wouldn't approve your conditions, but we're happy to have you um, condition your grant of the variance that we convey the land in accordance to the Conservation Commission decision or whatever you want. It's not um, that we're, we don't have any problems about that whatsoever.
I mean, you know, generally speaking, I I have a hard time with variances, um. But I think you've done several things in this case, um. As far as the building's quite small, it's uh, it it's actually set back more from what you think of as the road, you mentioned in your talk.
Right.
Uh, and I thought you you uh, it was relatively done for all residents across the street, as far as what it looks like. Um, so that kind of mitigates it for me, um. But um. So, um, I guess I have more, more questions therefore.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Mr. Spencer. Yeah, uh, near, in your package there, turning me, there's an aerial photo, could we? Put that on screen. I think that's the same one I'm looking at.
Yeah, there might be two.
I think that's the one I'm looking at.
Okay.
Okay, let's work off that one. Sure, that's the one in front of me. So I just want, I would just, if you would. I'll start this by saying, I mean, in the aspect, you've met the criteria for our variance, the question is how big should the variance be? And this is asking for a significant variance of forty feet. So I guess I'm trying to understand who, who's around there, who are the neighbors in that area? Where are the buildings? What are the structures? And and to Mr. Swan's point, I think, I think you mentioned this notion of the travel path. I'd like you to expand upon that, please, as it relates to uh the correct, the factors that should be uh, meaningful when we try to bury the front yard by such a significant variance.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so this is an industrial condominium here. And um, Patrick and Craig are sitting right here. They're, uh, they own one or two of the units there, but that's owned by an association force. This is a church.
That's Rochester.
Oh, excuse me, that's Rochester Electronics.
Okay, Jessica, I'm sorry. The building, the first building.
This is a, this is, it's industrial condominium, Hale Street, industrial condominiums.
And
And these are all
Generally speaking, what types of activities are?
So they're the contractors who have um, their, you know, they like have all their storage in like units in there. Um, there's a couple of people that run like, you know, it could be even like manufacturing in, but so they're coming in to serve the eight, eight units there. Um, this is Rochester Electronics. Um, all these people, of course, got notices of this hearing, right? Um, and then this is a single family home here. And the, you know, single family homes back here and back here. So the only one right across the street is right here. Um, and then that would be at the corner of Malcolm Hoyt and Hale Street. So if you could go to the wetlands long, uh, the pretty one, yeah, there we go. So um, I agree with you, Mr. Bennet, uh, forty feet is a, is a lot to ask for an aberrance. However, here it is impossible to move the building down because you interfere with this twenty five foot no touch. So these other lines, we can accomplish, we can get certain waivers from depending on how we do construction from the Conservation Commission. We cannot get a waiver from the twenty five foot no touch. Uh, and so we can't move it back because you can see that we have constructed storm water right up as close as we can to it. Um, and you're not allowed to even alter the soil.
I mean, I understand that and I accept that. I guess my question, that's all well and good, but um I, what I am looking at are the factors which would have prompted the the city council to adopt the sixty foot setback here and why we should depart from that so significantly here and what factors I should be guided by and making that decision.
Sure. So again, um, the reason we have a variance, right, is that when there are exceptional circumstances related to shape to park or soil condition, in this instance, soil condition, a person can't use their property essentially, right?
The question is, why should we give you a forty foot variance? What are the factors that I should be thinking about when you are getting within twenty feet of the road?
Sure.
That's the issue. I understand the reasons and all of that. Please address that if you can.
Okay, I I was gonna go through them.
Okay.
I'll go backwards. Okay, so yeah, so the travel path is a little over forty feet from the front of the building. So there's twenty one feet-ish, I I don't have the exact number in front of me, there's twenty one feet to the property line. But then there's a little over another twenty feet to the travel path. Typically, these buildings would be much larger in the industrial park. The height limitation is forty feet, I believe. And this building is thirty, um, we have it on one of the plans. If you could go to the elevation plan. And can you, does that say thirty five?
Twenty nine.
Twenty five feet. So we're at twenty five feet, so we have it much more feeling like a residential home, which in Newburyport, the furthest distance of a residential home, front yard setback is twenty five feet. Um, so we have it smaller than what industrial buildings are typically allowed to be in the industrial park, both on height and massing. This is a much smaller building. Um, as it sits broadside on the street, it is one less than a half like a quarter in size of the building next door to it. So it has a much more uh, residential feel and is less imposing on the street itself, which I presume are part of the reasons for the dimensional requirements.
That's very
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Uh, Mr. Chad.
Yeah, um, for me, I guess the thing we, the hurdle we have to get over is the hardship. So I wanted to just review the hardship. Why the building couldn't go on the second upland area? Is the, I think it's in uh, two slides down. Uh, yeah, that one. Is the stream, the thing that's running diagonally?
Right here, this is the stream. So you'll see that the, this, this um, lot touches the road right here.
Right, so if you
So you have to come in here and cross the stream.
You have to jump the stream.
To get over to the uplands.
Okay, and that's not acceptable to the conservation?
No, crossing a stream is um, not a good thing at all.
Even with a culvert?
No, no, you definitely don't, can't use a culvert. There would have to be some significant relief, because you're not just talking about crossing the stream. All of the resource areas around the stream, you've got the bank and the impact on the bank and whatever you build there, not just the stream itself. Plus, you've got, there's a no touch zone around both sides of the stream that itself and the banks.
Okay, that satisfies my curiosity. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm the scout.
The home across the street, um, any idea what that setback is?
I can't.
Um, let's say it's probably twenty three, I mean.
Here's the property line right here.
So it's gonna be, we'd be probably the property line, probably about the same from what we're looking at, forty feet to the street.
I mean, this kind of goes to the point that was just being made about what's the reason for the setback for the industrial, right? And it's probably to protect the the neighboring, the neighboring properties. But I, it's, it's very interesting how you've designed the property to look like.
Yeah, and part of that design also, I mean, is to not allow semi tractor trailers to be able to get around in there, so there's no loading dock. Um, I know it's always a concern on Hale Street, they don't like the semi track back that go through the industrial park. So we designed it so it, uh, tractor trailer cannot fit back there, so we can't deliver it back there. We tried to design it, even though it's an industrial building, it looks somewhat residential, a little less of an impact. If you look up and down the street, they're all big giant buildings, but you know, this is a, we're using twenty eight hundred plus minus square feet. Similar to a house, basically. And that would make a little residential looking, at least in the front. They can't, nobody can see except for that's what part of the back. Part of the idea. At the end of the neighborhood.
And do you have an idea about what you would use the building? Is that something that, soldiers, for example, that it took neighbors?
Yeah, so what we have currently in the other building are are contractors, because each each unit has an office and it has a, so there's small contractors, um, electricians. Uh, they need a place to store their equipment and they need a little office space and it's, it's and hard to find item in Newburyport. It's hard to find that kind of, I need an office and I need a, like, not a yard to store stuff in, but I need a one of two building to store my material in. So we thought, because uh, you know, the other building's completely full, um, very little of it. And uh, we thought that would be a good low impact use, because it's not really, there's light manufacturing, I don't really like it in some of these, but mostly it's just you know, contractors' shelves. There are some businesses in there that do other things, but it's all, it has to be allowed by.
Right, but you don't anticipate anything that's going to be a lot of noise or sound, given it's a little closer to the road than
No, there's no, that is not that kind of truck capital, so that's any kind of manufacturing that would be heavy. Anything, I I imagine anything would have to be approved with part of the, the in there anyway, so anything with that kind of, you know, that thing and stuff like that, so. Yeah, because of the eight units in the other, there's no noise impact at all. We, we don't have any completion in there.
Thank you for the questions.
Okay, Mr. Swan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, question about the, the building that we're talking about now, the, the building that exists. How um, how did that lot come about?
Sure, so it was, um, it was taken out, this whole piece existed
As one lot?
As one lot.
Okay.
And then that was taken out to build this one conforming one.
And that's mostly upland?
That is upland there, right?
All right, that was my big question here, because one of our, one of our criteria is that the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions of the applicant taking subsequent to the adoption of this chapter. Uh, so if you broke off all the uplands and left kind of a little bit of uplands here and a little bit of uplands there. And now you want to come in for a variance because you've got this little bit of uplands. That's not really what I wanted to hear. Okay, that's, that's
Yeah, Miss, Miss Scout asked my question. I, you mentioned wildlife habitat and conservation commission, and I was just curious about what kind of industrial circumstances.
All right, uh, I don't have any questions that haven't been asked. I could do, there's some deliberation comments, but and unless there's any other questions, we'll close the question from the board forth and go into deliberations and
One of the questions, I have one to follow.
Yeah.
Just for a little bit more context on that, um. When you broke off the, the initial chunk to make the existing building, why did you do it the way you did it?
It wasn't, people, I don't think we call us, but back in the day, there were two lots. It was a rear and front. So yeah, it went that way. So we just took off the, the, the front uplands piece to build that building and then left the whole of the other lot. Uh, they wouldn't done for any particular reason that way, it's just we wanted.
We just needed that amount of space for that.
We didn't want to take more space.
When you acquired that land, was it multiple lots that you acquired and then they merged together or?
Was, I believe, two. It was, it was referred to as uh, no, uh, twenty one, a twenty three Malcolm Hoyt and twenty three Malcolm Hoyt rear. It's a little sketchy on whether they're two separate lots, but that's how it was in the S S R's database.
Yeah.
Um, and the lines seem to go right down the middle, yeah. So what we did, we got rid of that line altogether, took the minimum amount to make that building and kept the other six or seven acres, whatever that turns out to be. And it wasn't done for any zoning purposes, just.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Can I just ask one follow up?
Of course.
Following along that line question, when was that? When, when did you carve off that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I'd bet a guess, maybe seventeen. Two thousand sixteen or seventeen.
Two thousand sixteen.
I think it's something.
It might have been before that. I, I, I understand.
I didn't, um. Craig and Patrick were represented by somebody else at the time, um. But I think it was, I want to say that. Oh, there might be a date on that. Um, on that original. I don't, I don't know. It was not in the last three years, that's for sure, but um. Mr. Swan, I don't know the exact date.
Uh, any other questions, anyone else? Um, okay, I will close the uh. Questions from the board section and we will go into deliberations and again, liberating the criteria of variance and uh, we begin. Does anyone mind if I, I'm gonna probably. Oh, we hold your attention.
Yeah, um, you know. I have a little bit of concern, the, the last question that, that I brought up. And then, it wasn't that many years ago, you had a whole lot here, chopped off a piece, leaving yourself with something that's really hard to develop. The other side of that, the building is very small. Um, and you created sort of not look like an industrial building. Unless you drive behind it, um. And uh, you know, it certainly faltered the road than previous building. You know, a factor for me is you're giving the conservation emissions five point four acres. Um, which also has an effect on the overall neighborhood here. Um. And is minimal. So unless my colleagues come up with something I hadn't thought of. I, I lean toward approvals.
Okay, Mr. Bennet.
Uh, thanks. So, um. I see two flaws to this analysis. I guess the first one was. I belong to missions, the soil. Freezing hardship here. Yes. Secondly, I certainly believe that it's in the community's best interest to see. Through the five plus acres of wetlands in the hands of the conservation commission. Uh, who knows what happens in these. Actually, that's a positive, that. For those reasons. So that, that I, I am trying to uh. Uh, reach a conclusion regarding the scope of this request for variance, because despite the fact that there's a substantial hardship. Created by its own self. I think we still have to concern ourselves that this variance is still. Uh, consistent with the um. Intent or purpose of the ordinance and purpose here is that sixty percent. So. Factors that mitigate in favor of the variance, I think. Are, most, really, size of the building. Uh, the nature of the building that, that, understanding that, please check me up, understand the building is separated into three distinct. Units, if you will, is that correct? So that suggests that. Any activity there in each unit would have to be somewhat. Modest and simple in size, therefore the notion of being comfortable. By the building, the mass, the architecture of all, maybe to be fair with friends and various, so. The point that the wild makes is an interesting. And. Without some. Consideration here. I do in balance that. Satisfy here, based upon the. Size of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Chen.
Yeah, I, I guess for me, you know, getting over that. So the conditions as a hardship uh, has been solved, uh, convinced that exists. So like my colleagues, the next question is, uh, this is sort of. Quite a good lead to go from sixty feet to twenty feet, but. Also looking at the lot and modest size of that building, I don't see how you could flip it around and twist it or move it somewhere else and. You know, you might be able to push it five feet from the street, but you're not going to get sixty. It, the building would be a long skinny thing, it'd be a bowling alley. And, and again, with the, you know, the addition of the, the land owner or the conservation commission that. I can support it. I think, I can get my head around the fact that it's close to the road, but it's a small building. It's gonna look and feel more like a home. Uh, than a real big industrial complex, so I can support it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chen, uh, Miss Scout.
Well, I think I would echo a lot of the other comments. I do think that it's really important that the design has, has the residential feel. And the setback is pretty similar to the one looked to me from, you know, you confirmed across the street. Um, I think the proposed use, I know it's in the industrial park, but it seems like. It, it's not going to be a noxious use, being close to the road that, that people might.
Sure.
Might really object to if, 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 if it's closer than the usual setback. Um, and I do think that it is really important, I think, um. The views of the conservation commission on, on how you've divided this up and. It is, you know, a, a nice fact for me that you've chosen to use the area that, that doesn't have the habitat in there. And so I, I'd be inclined to support it as well.
Mr. Dela, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I think, uh. There are a lot of, certainly a lot of uh, factors that militate in favor of granting uh, the variance here. It is. Uh, you know, it, it remains a large lot. With the two upland sections. Um, and with the. Substantial amount of wetlands that will be given over to uh, the conservation commission, so that also. Uh, militates in favor of, of. A favorable result here, I think, um. It, it is interesting how the, the, the first, the first lot was chipped out. But, that being said, a- as we've heard from the presentation, there could be other ways into. The other, uh, the other uplands, the other habitat. So I don't know that, um. That this is a situation where it's created, uh. The, the chipping out of that initial lot created the hardship here. I think the hardship existed because the lot was. Quite frankly, a whole bunch of wetlands to begin with. So I think that, um, based on the, the analysis that we've heard from everyone here, uh, I think that I, I can also support this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dela.
Yes, I too appreciate it, Mr. Delai's questions and was satisfied with the response. And it's not only the acquisition of the wetlands, but some of the communities that, so I think development and industrial park in general.
I, um, and thank you, Mr. Bennet. I agree, and I think the board has done a really nice job, a very detailed, gradual job and. Articulating reasons of that, um, uh, that buttress, uh, or reasons that, um. Address the criteria necessary to find for a board like this to find an ownership and thus favorably. Grant to variance, and so I always, it's not easy work, uh, but when I look at this zone as well, and the colleague said it all, I always have that. It, it's not so much a, um, an industrial as it is a, um. An enterprise zone, and we often use that language and it's become kind of more in fashion than to speak of these sections of. Cities and towns as more of an enterprise zone versus strictly an industrial park, because that's not what it is. It's not how it behaves. I think. Uh, it's malleable and it's, it's evolving as are the times, as should we, so. When we're asked and called upon to grant something as rigid and, and, and. Static, um, as a variance, you know, at first glance, I think we're inclined to think, well, that's a really hard bar and it is. But, um, we're also a board of appeals and our entire existence is, uh, epicentric to this notion that we. Um, we apply empathy and a sort of a human lens. Uh, a real time lens to that which is not a human and, uh, and very, you know, academic, so. Uh, we breathe life into this notion of evolution of our zoning in our, our districts and our areas so that they more aligned with how we live and how we. Behave and how we want these zones to function. I think it's a perfect adaptive. I, I know we overuse this phrase adaptive reuse, but it really is a wonderful way to design and residentialize. A, um, a non-residential use, uh, to soften it in its place, in its context and in its time. I think it's. It's sensitive, it's appropriate. There's more than enough, in my opinion, I think all of you agree. Um, to substantiate the, um, uh, you know, geotechnical and hydrotechnical connections to this site. In that there are no other better ways to do this or cite this building without offending. Um, in, you know, an untenable way, um, the conservation interests of our city and our zone and our, you know, and our. Obviously, our ecology and, and the resources there. So this is a soft, soft impact. I, um. I like seeing this, you know, it's not often we see this, um, so we should. Really carefully look at these as you guys all have and I. You know, it all sounds gushing about it, but it's just nice to get board function where we all sort of have that thoughtful approach. We're not so tethered to the structure of the code because. Somehow, so I, I too can support it for those reasons. I think it's a wonderful. Um, run at this, so good luck to you guys. If you vote back, you, uh, find and support. Um, I have nothing further, and if there aren't any other deliberations, anyone else would say anything further?
It's something that we would condition approval on agreement of the conservation commission.
Yeah, we would, we can, and that's certainly been our power to do so, um, to. Whomever among you, um, makes that motion, just add that to the motion, so. Um, I will invite a motion to approve. I'm moving, we approved various application twenty one history, which is under twenty two dash five. Subject to the mission that they followed through the proposed yet, the conservation mission of the land shall on the plan. All right, uh, motion has been made by, um, Mr. Swan, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bennet, motion made and seconded on the, uh. Uh, application to approve, I'm sorry, motion to approve the variance. Um, calling the role, um, Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Delai.
Yes.
Yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion counts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, moving now to our third matter on public hearing, we have the application of Claudio. Um, Lindonfeld and, uh, Cornelia Urban, the property address eleven Purchase Street. This is a special permit for non-conformities. The, it seems all necessary permits and approvals.
How do you like this set, presenters?
Welcome, uh, actually, uh, if we can have presenters on this side. Um, you know, to my left and, uh, this way you can see the board and this way, uh, you can make.
Let me continue one too. Okay, I didn't realize those things.
I want you to feel well, so, um, do you want us, I, you'll be, uh, you'll record any of your.
I'm putting the audio on.
Okay, great. Um, and for the record, um, our keeper of the record, Miss Gretchen Joy is going to be departing live meeting, uh, continuing to monitor and report on Zoom. Uh, and we'll continue keeping the minutes and the record, uh, from home. Um, she is, uh, uh, just not feeling a hundred percent, so. Uh, with that, I will just read the, uh, the public notice and we'll, we'll undertake our third application this evening. And welcome to all of those that have entered the room, uh, to the Zone Board of Appeals for. October eleventh, twenty twenty two. The application before us is Claudio, uh, Lindonfeld and Cornelia Urban, uh, the property address eleven Purchase Street. Purchase Street. This is an application for a special permit for non-conformity socket twenty two twenty six. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, approvals, uh, for the identification, modification within a side yard setback. And the addition greater, and an addition greater than five hundred square feet. Uh, before, ladies and gentlemen, before you had entered the room this evening, I must repeat this. Uh, we had designated our five voting members as myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Bennet, uh, Mr. Chen and. And Mr. Delai, one, two, three, four. Mr. Delai is refusing himself, so in lieu of Mr. Delai. Uh, we had, uh, appointed, uh, Ms. Patricia Pecking to vote, one of our alternates, along with, um, Liz Scout or other alternates, but. Um, we had originally designated that, was there, if you wanted to switch that or. Uh, uh, yeah, we've done that, um, uh, then had just walked in a few moments after we've made that decision, so. We will, for purposes of this application, uh, render our five voting members, uh, to include, uh, Ms. Scout. And so our five voting members are myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Bennet, Mr. Chen and Ms. Scout. So without further ado, um, we have the application of eleven Purchase Street. May we hear from the app, council?
Sure, thank you. Uh, Jeff Roloff, counsel for the applicants, uh, Claudio, uh, Lilian Feld and Nina Urban, who are behind me here this evening. In case questions come up that they need to answer. Also with me are Matt Lagus with Scott Brown Architects. And Blake Wilcox, the Doppel Group, who is managing the construction activities. Um, as you noted at the outset, uh, sorry, next slide, Caitlin, please. Uh, we are looking for two special permits for non-conformities, one related to some work that's, uh, being proposed on the structure within the side yard. The left side yard setback. And then also in addition to the rear of the house, exceeding the five hundred square foot threshold. Um, next slide, please. Just to get you oriented to the, the context and the neighborhood, so in yellow is the eleven Purchase Street property. Um, I just, I'll just point out while we have this slide, uh, available, that the structure, uh, at issue here. Is smaller than many of the adjoining properties, which I think you can tell visually from, uh, the aerial here. Um, combined with the fact that the property is actually larger and the. Open space associated with the property is larger than most of the abutting properties. Uh, next slide, please. I won't go through this in detail, but just to, um. Highlight a few things, the structure is lawfully pre-existing, a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming structure. Due to the fact that the building is in the left yard set, setback area, the front yard setback. Um, the lot area is insufficient, um, as compared to the zoning requirements and the frontage is insufficient. The proposed project, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt to go through the architectural changes, those are at the core of the applications. And what we're proposing, but generally speaking, the project involves converting this structure from a two-family to a single-family. The addition of a two-story addition on the rear of the building in place of an existing porch with a second story room above it. Um. It's going to be a larger footprint than what's there, a nineteen by nineteen foot addition. Uh, there's a new, uh, covered portico on the right side elevation and three new shed dormers that are each compliant with the dormer. Um, requirements of the ordinance. Um, the project will involve replacing the front si- sidewalk with the bricks, the brick sidewalk. Uh, the gravel driveway that exists currently will be replaced with permeable pavers. The plot plan, which you'll see in a, in a bit, um, does include details that are more peripheral to. The issues and applications before you, but they include, um, fencing as well as a deck off the, uh, the proposed addition. We included those details primarily to be. We included those details primarily to be. Sort of transparent and forthcoming with the neighbors. We have circulated these plans to the immediate neighbors. Um and we wanted to the Claudio and Nina wanted to preserve the ability to put these fences in. Uh in the event that's what they decided to do, but I did want to mention this, that they may not be putting all the fences in that are shown on the plan. They're actually in discussions with two or three of the neighbors about. Um replacing existing fences, sharing fences. Um to the rear of the property, potentially not even putting it a new fence in, but instead installing a vegetative screen. But we have kept these details on these plans. Um because they want to preserve the right to do that uh down the road and wanted to be transparent about it. Uh Caitlin, next slide, please. So with this, I'll turn it over to Matt to go through the architectural changes.
Uh good evening, everyone. Natalie just got around architects. Uh so our approach here is to to keep the main box, you know, a traditional style, but. To uh also add the the last, you know, the the addition off the rear to do in a way that. There's a little bit of a different design aesthetic direction, but complimentary to the main house. So. Uh if you're looking at the front elevation, um a lot of what we've done is keep the windows and doors in the same location for, you know. Uh to to keep them in the same location, basically not only help us with DCOD, but it helps with that traditional feel of the house. So. Uh doing that in addition to staying sensitive on where and why we're adding new windows, like there's a. A box paper, instance, on the right elevation, you'll see in the next slide, but. That helps us keep the main box in the traditional style, but also helps us, you know, keep that DCOD calculation down, which is always a challenge. Uh so the front elevation, the entry windows and uh doors are all the same. Uh we added dormers at the roof level, but. They're a bit deceptive. The left dormer is actually three and a half feet back from the main face of the house, the one on the right, so eight, eight foot two. Which you'll see on the the right elevation. Uh the real elevation shows the the nineteen by nineteen addition, which again I'd said that we've. Taken a little bit of a of a different design aesthetic, but we're holding the roofline low, where we're keeping the profile um. You know, a little bit lower than than the existing house. The height of that is is closer to maybe twenty two foot six versus. Twenty eight foot one, so it's about a six foot difference between the two. Uh Caitlin, please. So uh this is the the right elevation where the driveway side is. Uh and here we're adding a traditional portico, same at the location. Most of the windows are in their same exact location. Uh you know, obviously, it's it's challenging working with DCOD, but the the goal here is to keep a lot of that in its. Uh same location as as best as possible and to really think through why we're moving a window, why we're adding a window. So in addition to to stepping that addition back, we're also. Uh holding it down to keep the magnitude of that addition uh a lot lower. Uh next slide, please. So the the left side shows um, you know, a little bit better detail of where the deck is going to go. It's about sixteen by nineteen. This also shows the uh the metal railing that has basement access. Uh it's an open staircase, so it it um is. Sort of tied a little bit into where we're having some metal elements on the on the back elevation, but. Doing it in a way that's a subtle sort of uh repetition of some materials that are around the corner. Um and and that's all I have for for my presentation. Um so unless there's any questions or. Or comments I'd be happy to address, I can turn it back over to our ten.
Uh I just want to quickly remind the board of the standards. So these special permits. Uh to extend or alter a pre-existing non-conforming, single or two-family structure. Maybe issued based on two findings. One, that there will be no addition of a new non-conformity. And two, that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um here, the project did not involve the addition of a new non-conformity. It's a project that's been thoughtfully designed such that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing uh non-conforming structure. We actually believe the project will improve the aesthetics of the existing structure and will result in an overall benefit. Um to the neighborhood. The intensity of use will be decreased from a two-family to a single-family. There's no proposed increase in height of the structure. It's actually a relatively low structure compared in uh adjacent properties. The height of the existing structure is twenty three point nine feet, where the bylaw or where the zoning ordinance allows a thirty five foot height. The work within the side yard setback will not be any closer to the property line than the existing structure. The project involves uh uh what we think is a minor expansion of the overall footprint of the building. The expansion is within the rear yard of the property, which is larger and will remain larger than the immediately surrounding yards. The product, the project preserves more open space on this lot than required, preserving sixty sixty percent. Of the lot versus the required forty percent. Uh we think the project will result in an improvement to the aesthetics of the structure. Uh in our, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and Newbury Court more generally. With that, I'll turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, three rollups. Um. Having um heard the completion of the presentation, we'll close the presentation portion of tonight's uh public hearing. On this address and we will go to public comment. Uh with public comment and for ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that were outside when we sort of walked through what. Uh the flow of the process, if you're not familiar, uh we have the card up on the screen and our. Uh our attendees logging on via Zoom are seeing this as well. Uh we'll just ask anyone who wishes to be heard. And we start with priority of those in the room physically and then anyone uh online that wishes to be heard and just. You needn't fall in any category of pro or con, uh just simply uh. Raise your hand and you'll be recognized and um share your thoughts, but do please give us your name and address. Uh okay, uh anyone in the room physically who wishes to uh be heard in connection with this application? Yes, ma'am.
We.
Oh, you can just simply stand where you are if you're comfortable. You're welcome to have a seat if you prefer. Uh and if you can just, if I can ask you to give your name and address for our. Our now at our our now offsite keeper of rights. Uh and then. We do ask everyone to kindly govern uh comments to about two minutes. We have wide latitude, so we we don't often police that, but with that, um you have a floor.
Thank you. Um my name is Margaret Bernier. Uh I present represent the abutters to the rear, number eighteen salmon stream. If you want to put up the um the image of the, I think it was like the second slide. Um. I want to be clear that our comments today are about the project and not about. Overall, we do not support the project. Just put that right on out there. The project takes what is a two thousand, two thousand seventy five square foot. House and makes it into a thirty five hundreds plus square foot house. From the front side purchase street, you're not going to see a lot of difference. But from the back, it is going to be a massive addition into. What is really a much smaller scaled neighborhood from the rear of butter side. Our house's total gross living area is only fifteen hundreds square feet. House next door to us is even a little bit less. There's just like thirteen or fourteen hundred. Um so for the abutters us. And the abutters of butter. It will be quite a massive um intensification of the site. We have a a number of concerns um. Because not only is it the addition, but it's also the deck. And the deck is going to be another, what, sixteen square feet off the bed? And then after that, there's going to be a patio. Which sort of brings us to the next line of concern, which is what are on the plants as six foot fences. Six foot fences for us just box us in all over again. Um we do have a very small yard, the entire lot. Our lot is only thirty two hundred square feet, period. End story. Um and so it just has this encroachment feel to it. Uh because we believe it is just too large for the bad structure. But as I say, next door, you've got the Doherty Need House. That's really pretty overbuilt on its lot. And then, of course, you have the Watt Vies House next door. That's way overbuilt on its lot. So. When the comment is made that it appears to be the new, with the new addition scaled to the existing houses, it's not exactly true. We recently and and replaced the back fence at our own expense. Because the previous owner had let the fence deteriorate. It's a forty two inch open slack fence. A six foot fence is going to provide further. Shadow impact for our gardens in addition to giving us that walled in tenement feeling. Which is becoming frankly, all too familiar in Newbury Court. Um. I know that the abutters have said that they're open to a vegetative screen, which is great, but when they reserve the right to construct the six foot fence in any time, it sort of undermines that. Position and thinking. Um the other concern that we have is that when you take into account. The attic dormers. On both sides and a second floor balcony, uh which is on the sketches on the addition. It kind of gives you the funny feeling that you get privacy on level one with a six foot fence, but. You've kind of forgotten that the third and second floors now have direct sightlines into the neighbors abutting all the surrounding properties. They'll be looking in our backyard. They'll be looking into the neighbors' houses from those dormer windows. And from the back balcony. So there's, you get privacy on one level, but it kind of gets overlooked on the other levels. Finally, um the project memo highlights the conversion from multi-family, which it is now, to single family. With the addition of the square footage, bringing this unit to thirty five hundred fifty feet. Um that's going to be awfully tempting to make that a multi-family again someday, probably not by these owners, but by subsequent owners. So what I respectfully ask the board is to outline for the abutters and communicate to us under all conditions. Can this property revert back to multi-family, bearing in mind that at least two abutting properties are existing multi-families already? So I'm not sure that the conversion to single family is going to be all that lengthy in time. We just don't know. Uh and the size of it, you can at least get to seven hundred seventeen hundred fifty unit condos out of that. So those are our concerns and I really again want to stress our concerns with the project, not the proponents. And we appreciate you allowing us to speak.
Thank you, council, and uh thank you for your uh your thoughtful remarks. Um was there something else?
No, no, I hadn't giggled because you seem counsel. That's the last thing I am. This is our structure right here. This is a fifteen hundred square gross feet of living space, seventy fifty on each level. Teddy had a modest old house.
Okay. Thank you. Um anyone else wish to speak in connection with this app? And thank you uh very much for the follow-up. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with this application? Yes, sir.
Everybody? Maybe, um Matt McCann. And I um live at twenty twenty seven. Speeds are just to uh. Uh we're here. Yeah, um so we're uh we're in a little bit different situation. So I did speak to both uh Jeff and to uh Claudio earlier. I think our. I'll just say generally speaking, um we we definitely feel, uh agree with the statement that I think architecturally will improve the house. And that um being single family is definitely preferable to us. The fact that it's, you know, extending further than we prefer, we're not as thrilled about that, but I think we accept that trade-off. Um our big concern that I expressed both to Claudio and to Jeff was the fence. So we're a little bit different. We don't have a four foot fence. We have a. Current six foot fence that I believe are um the people we bought, the person we bought from. Had actually attached that fence to an existing chain link fence. And which I understand that that Claudio and you would like to take that down. Which does make sense, but if you can take an attempt, probably getting. Uh compromise the fence. So I think we discussed potentially agreeing on a new six foot fence. Um and then I think the one sticking point you had, which I did express. Was that the revised plan actually has the fence. Uh continuing along our shed to the point where it might actually come right up against it and couldn't. Do repairs in the back. But I think talking to Claudio, I think they're all into. Vegetative and I just want to make sure I express that we wouldn't want to be in a situation we could not. Make repairs to the back of the shed. I believe we can agree on, you know, vegetation and things like that. So I think. Um you know, we're in a different situation. We prefer it to be smaller, but it's a trade-off. And I think it does improve uh what the property looks like. So I think the fence is our biggest focus and I think we. Uh express where we will be on that. So I just wanted to draw a record. Um about that.
Alright, uh thank you, Mr. McCann. Uh anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? Or against or just simply their thoughts. Um. Alright, um I will now go to those online um having seen, seeing no hands here in the room. And of course, if someone thinks that someone comes up with. Any further questions here in the room, we'll certainly give you the floor again. Uh anyone attending via Zoom who wishes to be heard, just kindly raise your hand by clicking the hand raised button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We will. Recognize you. We see that there's one dial in caller. Uh we'll recognize that caller, that individual which should be heard by uh the last. Reditch of the number. Seeing no hands going once, going twice. Anything further in the room before we move along? Uh may I ask? I apologize. I didn't catch the name from my own notes. May I ask you?
Margaret Bernier.
Bernier. Thank you very much. Um anyone else wish to uh be heard? See no further interest on uh speaking. We will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and go into questions from the board. Uh and we'll begin with Mr. Shannon, my left.
Oh, thank you. Um I I I I'm so sorry. This was so long. It's my lab. I guess I don't need to see the name tag right now. Clear in line, so you can see my name.
This, we're we're still, we're we're not used to being in this room. I apologize. We we have, we somehow married, hardwired ourselves to where people sit. We can be able to read, you know, word, language, my.
Uh yeah, my first question is uh has to do uh. Both of your butters um talk about fences. And your plan has some things on it. Although somebody mentioned the fence right in line and the shed at number twenty and that's not showing the second one. I'm confused, sir. Basically, what is your, how would you answer the questions that came up to a butters with respect? What's your plan for fences? What is.
So uh I'll respond in two ways to that. First of all, I think that the topic of fences is is here in front of us, only because we put them on the plot plan. They're. I don't think they're actually relevant to the applications that are pending. The applications that are pending. Are seeking approval to change the non-conforming structure. That's the residence itself. We included the fencing on this to be forthcoming and transparent with the neighbors because we knew we were going to be circulating these plans to them. And what we didn't want to do is. Um go ahead with the project approved by the ZVA. Go ahead with the building changes that were presented here. And then put fences in and have the neighbor be surprised. So we. Internally decided to put the fencing details on the plan, the deck on the plan. You'll notice also we're proposing to get rid of the existing shed and build a smaller one as close to the corner of the property as we can. Uh six feet off of the rear and the sidelines. Um so the first answer is we don't think the fencing is actually relevant to these applications. It's not important. Even if you deny these applications. These owners can go in and install these fences tomorrow. Alright, but substantively, we have been in discussions with the two neighbors you heard from. Um those are ongoing discussions. We've committed to talking to. Uh the the uh Margaret, the butter to the rear there about an alternative to a six foot fence. For example, is there any of the Claudio and Nina are looking for privacy in their yard and the ability to keep a dog a dog contained? Um can we accomplish that or can they accomplish that with a vegetative screen combined with that four foot rail fence that's there? Or is there something else that can be done to accomplish those objectives? Um without putting in a six foot fence to which Margaret objects. That's a discussion that they've committed to having and. It's a detail that's, it's open. Something that doesn't have to be um finalized as part of this process. Um with respect to Matt McCain, uh the other neighbor on the corner. Uh we had very productive discussions this morning about just removing the fence that's there. Replacing it in a combined coordinated effort with one fence that both parties are happy with. Maintaining enough space behind the shed so that they can get to it to maintain it. Either by using plantings to screen that area or just offsetting the fence. Far enough so that they can get in there. So these are ongoing conversations. We're pretty confident we're going to be able to work through these, but. They're peripheral to the applications that are before this board. We don't want to hold up this process to resolve those um. Conversations and we'd like to keep these details on the plans that we have in front of you, just so that. The right to install them is acknowledged going forward, whether or not they do it.
I I I'm going to take just a kind of a point of um. Or a personal preferences chair and a certain rollouts with respect because I've known you for a long time. Um I think. this board would likely, though I won't speak and share my sentiment, which I'll share with you, that I think all of this is a sort of a totality of presentation, the fencing, um, the impact. Uh, what I think it's, it's probably, and I'll let the board, I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves, but I, I think that it is in the interest of this board and certainly in the interest of a better result to address um, even the sort of more granular details, the finer strokes, uh, because they impact that which is within our curfew and the fencing and the massing and the scale and those sorts of things certainly aren't outside of our curfew. Uh, whether many might say they're not primary, but they're certainly not um, outside entirely. So I wouldn't want to go too far down that road because I know that I would find it difficult to reconcile if there was sort of a proponent harder in line that, you know, the fencing conversation, this sort of other aesthetic uh, is something that should be done with on another day. I don't know that that is something I, you know, I agree with. So I, I think it's fair to just tell you that out of the gate and let the rest of the board members um, speak to that if they wish along the way. Um, so with that, uh, Mr. Bennett.
Uh, another topic that came up from Abara was the, the scale of this thing. I know massing is another thing we think about. The, the current uh, assessment report, they came in with this application shows the building has two thousand and seventy-five square feet of living area. How much square feet of living area is there with your proposal? So, um, a little math is a little fuzzy when it comes to uh, square footage of this house that a scepter's uh, data card does not include uh, the full square footage of the existing attic. Half of it uh, is um, sort of finished, but is not included uh, in that square footage. It also doesn't include existing uh, closed screen boards that were removed from the back of the house. So I actually think that number is a little higher than what's shown in, on that data card. Uh, but by my rough calculations, uh, and uh, again, the math is a little fuzzy because when it comes to calculating square footage at the attic level, you have to make a judgment in terms of where you calculate that. I think roughly, we, we, we're looking at about seven hundred square feet at uh, finished space at the attic compared to uh, what I think is currently about four hundred square feet. So I think in totality, uh, for this new um uh, renovation, I think we're looking at around thirty-three hundred square feet plus or minus uh, as opposed to what's there now, which I think is around twenty. Um, another question that, that came up from the abutters was about you know, part of the attraction to some of the neighborhood is going to a single family here. Build new conditions that that's part of the deal.
Well, I, um, I don't want to give legal advice to the abutters, but I'm pretty certain that under the zoning ordinance, if somebody in the future wanted to convert this single family house to a two family house within this R two zone, they'd have to come to the ZBA for a special. Yes. I don't think it conditions worth it. And can I just respond really quickly to the fence and just a point of fact on the fence topic? So just, we don't have photos of the uh, backyard. I wish I uh, had some in our slides, but uh, Claudio reminds me to inform you that currently there are essentially fences around this entire parcel. Six foot fences from on the left side, all the way down the property line. On the back, um, there is not a six foot fence and this is the, the, the line that Margaret was speaking to. She has a lower slatted fence that you can see through, so totally different on the back. But then on the right side, again, six foot fence. So it's, it's not a significant change to come in here and put a new six foot fence. So even if that's a detail that you see as significant, um, I don't think the fencing that proposed and shown on this plot plan would prevent you from making the findings you need to support these special permits.
I, I don't. My comment is simply raising the issue of not segregating out, but notion of fencing as a subject matter from the conversation this evening. Not so much what that fencing looks like, if at all, you know, what sizes. But yeah, and, and very good and um, and uh, point to the table. So I appreciate that. And to follow up, just um, just on the question on the um, the single versus um, versus two family, uh, this one, I, I do agree with uh, with attorney roll offs. It is in fact something that if this, and this goes to a question that I, I I believe Miss Berne had raised as well. If there were a movement in the future, some undefined point in the future, sooner or later, different ownership or what have you, at least under the current paradigm of our zoning, it would have, and presumably any if any evolution that it would have to come back before whoever sits in our chairs, if not us. Um, or review as though of random. So um, there's almost an embedded embedded safety net, yeah, condition by virtue of just the uh, the zoning itself. Um, which may or may not be uh, of some comfort to those of the.
Uh, thank you for that. I have one other question, which is you mentioned in the presentation that your dormer is three and a half and needs setback from the building. Were you referring to the dorm on the left uh, or the dorm on the right?
So both dormers on the left side. The dorm on the left side from the front is three and a half. That's setback a foot and a half on the left side, uh, but the, the dorm on the right is eight foot two from the front.
There's about another over seven feet from the building to the street. So that dorm is about ten feet back. You know, one of the things we sometimes focus on is this rubber extension near the street. So that's a good ten feet back and way up in the air. Um, okay, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Just that one, you describe what's going on and what, what the space is being used for.
So on the first floor, the proposed addition uh, is an extension of the living space. Um, and on the second floor, uh, is a combination of a storage bathroom and a master suite. Well, we, we've closed uh, questions, but I'll, I'll certainly, it's just us. So in the spirit of having a better result, we want to hear from everyone. So. Okay, thank you. Um, and what will, what you may find in, in this, and this goes to uh, Mr. McCann as well, or anyone else that may see. When questions are posed to the board, forgive us um, the appearance of discourtesy and not responding directly. It's just more the format. You may well find, if not, we'll surely find your question redacted uh, by a member of the board imposed in that manner. So rest assured, we hear it and we will take it in, um, even if it, it comes off as dismissed and it's not intended that way. It's merely the procedural um, you know, rigor of this process for what it's worth. Uh, but I, I've heard that question and certainly appreciate it. So with that, um, I believe we're at the Mr. Chen.
Will there be any living space in the basement? So uh, I mean, that, a part of the reason why we're, um, we're proposing that staircase on the back is, it's for, you know, any sort of potential use down there. We haven't really uh, spent significant time working out the basement. So uh, as of right now, there is, there is no finished space, but um, the goal is to have some sort of finished space down there. Yes, that's the primary reason for adding the staircase in that. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, going to the zoning matrix, I, I can't make heads or tails how you got from uh, the existing lot coverage is twenty-two point two percent and the proposed is twenty-five, which is a two point eight percent increase. And this building is, you know, it's a good size. It's two hundred and sixty square feet on the ground, which is about six percent of the lot. How did the math come out? I know you're dumping a porch, but porch is pretty small compared to the building. Can you go over how you got from twenty-two point two to twenty-five? With a three hundred and sixty square foot footprint?
Uh, I don't, I don't have the, the exact math from uh, from Chuck's um, calculations, but I, I think the, the net difference between uh, removing the, the existing shed that's there and making it smaller in addition to uh, removing the uh, the, the two story addition that's there now netted that uh, percentage to, to be that two.
Okay, because you are replacing the shed. It's just a smaller shed. I mean, it's really almost insignificant. So you don't have the math, we're just.
I don't have the math.
I want to be trustworthy. No, it's uh, no other question.
I have a question, just a clarification. I saw on the plans that the current um, the current home has a chimney or two chimneys and there's none drawn on the plans. Is that, that's correct?
Uh, I don't have any, I don't have any further questions either that haven't already been asked and uh, addressed. So we will, unless there's any further questions from the ZBA, well, yes, yeah.
Uh, just one more point because I'm not sure if this letter came to the board, it was addressed to the board. So the reason I'm sitting here is because Lisa Mead is one of the abutters to this property. Um, she and her partner did submit a letter. I thought it went to the ZBA. Maybe she just sent it to me expressing no opposition to the project. So I just wanted that, that to be noted on the record.
Thank you, attorney roll offs. Um, we, uh, did everyone receive that letter? Um, okay, so we can accept it as represented that there is uh, support by um, by the by um, the abutters. Um, so
That one abutter, yes.
Okay, um, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, uh, and we can go into deliberations now. And Mr. Swan will lead us off with deliberations around the criteria for the specific.
Yeah, well, first criteria is are there any new non-informities? And I don't see it. Uh, so it looks bad. Uh, next basic criteria is worse than what's there, sort of. You know, from my perspective, uh, this uh, addition is on the back. It is setting on both sides. It is low from the top. Does make the place bigger, but um, there is quite a bit of land in this lot, so it doesn't seem it's like covered ratios. So the math is all right there. Um, so, um, I, I have some concerns about fence, but I'm hoping one of my colleagues will figure out a better way to address that as we go around the table. Um, but I can support this.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Swan and uh, Mr. Bennett. I, I, I'm in the same category. My support is somewhat reluctant. I, I think this is quite a large addition and pushes the on board for me. Uh, I look around the neighborhood and I see it's a, some of the hosh, hodge of sizes and I take Ms. Berne's comments, um, which is right next door, however, there are other rather large uh, structures uh, right around the life of this house here. So, uh, that being said, I think I, I don't think I'm, I shouldn't be guided by one, but have to look at this neighborhood in its totality. And it seems to me that I, I just my own bias here. I uh, I hate to say actually the two thousand and one coming to the single. That's not, it is all. I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, Mr. Chen.
Yeah, uh, I, I guess the, my problem was always massing the sties, which I think one of the abutters brought up. The addition is, you know, we, in, in round numbers, twice the size of the existing porch that sticks off the back. I think the uh, the new addition is nineteen feet and the porch is somewhere around ten, could be eleven. Hard to scale it. So it is quite a bit bigger. Um, uh, a- and I think like my colleagues have brought that up, that massing, we, we do take that into account. Um, however, with that said, I think we've had other projects similar to this come before us that uh, we found that this scale is, is acceptable. Um, so I'd have to say in keeping with uh, you know, what, what we've done in the past and the fact that it's large, not, not huge, uh, I, I would find it acceptable. Um, and again, there are no new non-informities. I, I'd deal with the size and not more detrimental to the negative. I would like to find a way to, that the board can get the fencing issue resolved for our neighbors. Um, I think fencing uh, is important. If you want a fence, I think there should be a fence. If you don't want a fence, uh, there should be a way to not have a fence. Um, I like the idea of uh, the screening, the, you know, our varieties or whatever, some type of vegetative screening where a fence might hit someone's property or hit, hit a building. Uh, I don't know if we can put that in, in the finding, but if there's a way we can craft that, I guess I would be supportive of that as well.
Well, I mean, we can invite Mr. Chen, we can, we can circle back to the applicant uh, through um, uh, through attorney roll offs and invite input or thoughts on it and see if that advances. The refinement of something in the way of a solution, if there is one, but I think we can do that. As we, as we round the table, we'll, I'll likely come back, attorney roll offs will likely circle back to you and, and your, your clients uh, to see if there's thoughts that could um.
I know attorneys love the terms mutually agreeable.
Uh, yeah, uh, uh, not always, not always so. Some things aren't always mutually agreeable, but we will aspire to the best version of that. From the time we, we have, but um, if there was anything further, Mr. Chen, will uh, Miss Gal, um, you have any uh, you have any deliberations?
Yeah, I don't know that I have anything new to add, other than it does seem like a big a big expansion of the property on, into the lot. And I keep looking at the open space and saying, is that, is that really what it's left with? Um, but looking at the pictures, uh, you know, it has more open space than, than most of the neighbors. So um, I don't think it's more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood than, than what does exist. So.
I am recused.
We're just going to keep calling on you.
I don't, I'm not voting. So my comments, can you take them with your thoughts? Like it would be a bit salty. I'm afraid. I do agree with Mr. Bernie that neighboring houses were overbuilt on their lot prior to our current zoning law. I do think that from Purchase Street, you are going to see the dormers. I may find them unsympathetic. Already adding seven hundred and twenty-two square feet and I'm imagining finishing the basement. I do have Alan massing concerns as well. And the penetration is, is rather jarring and not coherent. I'm starting to see the chimneys go. And I am sympathetic to the objection to the death. So I, for me, I've given the equation, I do substantially, however, I'm not voting.
Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Spexing. Um, you know, I, I, I'm kind of torn in this as well. I, I'm definitely moved by, and I think it's no secret. I mean, I'm moved by the, the de-intensification of two families, a single family. I think that i- in this zoning district, notwithstanding the lawful comments and, and very um, appropriate comments of Mr. Bennet with respect to housing stock uh, and the loss of um, of multi-families. I think that we also have to run that through the lens of the, the place and space. And this is, these are tight quarters, to say the least. Um, so de-intensification in already tight quarters of um, of the use is, I think, favorable, uh, and is a um, a positive redaction and adaption of this uh, of this property. And I do think it is a large lot. I think it's also true that its Purchase Street uh, exposure, it leaves little to the, you know, the passive bias to what the impact really is, but, but the side view and the view, um, you know, every other, the other three sides, you know, will show more of the massing. All of that said, it, it, while it is, attack and see how it can be um, more detrimental, uh, perhaps, at least even more as they say, I don't think it's substantial. I don't think it rises to the criteria of substantially more detrimental based on the cases we've seen along the way. Um, myself personally, subs- the word substantial in the criteria is what by is just that in my mind, it's, it's a Subs- the word substantial in the criteria is what by is just that in my mind. It's, it's a, it's a, an above and beyond. Measure of impact, uh, of detriment and. You know, while fair minds might differ on detriment, I think that there would be substantial, you know, for me, that'd be a lot. Lot more intrusive. Uh, I can support it, though I I share the, my colleagues' thoughts with the, um. Whether there's any, um, whether there's any value in pursuing, trying to soften the. Uh, the immediate butter impact with potentially vegetative. Um, screen in lieu of what admittedly already exists in the form of six-foot fencing. Proposed to be replaced with more six-foot fencing. And so I'll put that out. To to, uh, you and your clients, Attorney Rolloffs, to the extent you wish to address it, and that's entirely up to you. This is. This isn't a green, this isn't a vegetative screen shakedown. It's just, it it's, it's been said, it's been heard. We, we need to, you know, we need to sort of, you know. Um, place it on the table and see if there's a there there and then move along, but, um. I, uh, I can support this, though that's, you know, in all fairness, that's. I would like to see, if I'm supporting, I certainly would like to see that kind of accommodation balance the equities in the neighborhood. But I won't say anything further. Was there any other deliberations that any member wishes to add before we. We close. Um, so, uh, we can close deliberations, but I, uh, this is promised by Attorney Rolloffs. By your thoughts, your client's thoughts or pause, if you wish to chat for a moment, uh, we're not gonna. You know, we're not gonna hurry you into a vote, uh, without giving you the opportunity to see if you wish to address anything.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to. Let me suggest, uh, this is the solution to that. So we're talking about two property lines here. Those of the, uh, the neighbors who spoke this evening. Um, I don't think it would be appropriate to give either of them a veto power on the fence that's shown on the plan, but my clients are, have told them. And remain willing to talk to them about alternatives to the fencing and. Sometimes to put some teeth on something like that is to just acknowledge that commitment and a condition. So one thing you could consider. Is imposing a condition that, um, requires the applicants to continue their discussions with those two neighbors. Uh, eighteen Salem and twenty Salem, uh, with respect to alternatives, uh, or different configurations of the proposed fencing. Um, if based on those discussions, the plan changes to just, as a matter of fact, report those changes back to the zoning board for its files. So it's clear what was accomplished or what wasn't accomplished. Um, it may be that they end up with the same configuration you're looking at now, and I don't think that should defeat the, um. Uh, the applications, but it also might, you know, having that commitment to report back to the board. Um, will put enough behind the discussions for them to be meaningful. So I would suggest that.
Any, um, any member of the C B A, uh, any further thoughts, uh, wanting to add additional comments? All right, here we go. Uh, and thank you, Jimmy Rolloffs, uh, for, and your applicants, uh, your, your clients as well. Folks, thank you for entertaining that. Additional conversation, whatever that may come to. Do we have a motion to approve? And if so, uh, is there?
Um, I would just add, if the board does want to go that way, that you report to the zoning administrator, um, perhaps prior to.
Thank you. All right, um, members of the C B A, uh, so we've heard from the Salem as well with respect to any such condition along those lines. I'm afraid that. Uh, should be in form of reporting to the zoning administrator before the issuance of building permits. Uh, with that, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, um. Audrey Lowenfeld and Cornelia Urban, eleven Purchase Street, Z N C twenty-two dash twenty-six. With provision that the discussion on fencing and coming up with, uh, a solution for the neighbors. Uh, be reported to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of the building permit.
And that's just report the result of that effort, not report a definitive. Result, uh, you know, a definitive one or the other, but simply that on request that it be readdressed and examined further. Be undertaken. Okay, second. All right, thank you, motion made by Mr. Chen with the, uh, condition and secondly by Mr. Swanton calling the rule, which will exclude Mr. Delilah and Crumbs. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Um, and Ms. Gao.
Yes.
Ralph Chambity, I vote yes. Uh, that is finally affirmed. The I F A V motion carries. And good luck to you and, uh, thank you for your indulgence. And, uh, folks, uh, Bernie or Miss, and Mr. McCann, thank you for your time and. Courtesy of your thoughts. Uh, it's very important in this process that. We endeavor to be as perfect in the imperfection of this business. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. Thank you all for your services.
Thank you.
All right, um, thank you, folks, uh, for coming in to see what. All right, moving, uh, to, we'll give a moment for, uh. Going for a line change. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I know that you've been sitting patiently outside. Allow me, since you've been sort of out of earshot, out of eye shot, I will, uh. Thank you for your patience. Um, I'll introduce myself. I'm Ralph Chambity. I'm the chair. We are, uh, pleased to have you here this evening and we will, um. Get into the business of your application. And I see Attorney Tucker, uh.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. So this is the application of, uh, La Barba Properties Management LLC, Two Whites Court. There are two matters before us, a variance request, Dr. Twenty-two dash six. Modify an existing variance for a side where you are in setback of a lot coverage for proposed two-family and also a special permit. Uh, the special permit is Dr. Twenty-two dash six, and it seeks all necessary approvals to modify the existing special permit. So as to reduce the three-family residential use to a two-family residential use. And with that, may we hear from the applicant, Attorney Tucker.
Please. Chair and members of the board, uh, my name is Michael Tucker and I practice a lot in puberty, Massachusetts. And I represent La Barba property management, uh, which owns Two Whites Court and, uh, and some other properties in Newburyport. Uh, Frank LaBarba has been a member of the community for quite a long time, and Two Whites Court is a location at which his daughter, his son-in-law, and his two grandchildren live. Uh, the purpose of the project is to increase the living space, uh, for that young family as their children grow. Uh, they won't be able to stay, uh, in the neighborhood that they're in now unless they can make some extra space. They've got a six-year-old and a two-year-old. Uh, both daughters, and, uh, that's the reason for the project. Uh, as the chair said, it's, uh, two applications for a single project. Uh, one in the nature of a modification of a variance that was, uh, granted in nineteen ninety-five. And one, a special permit, uh, for use and for, uh, relief as to dimension. Uh, I should start by saying that the project does not, uh, increase, I'm sorry, does not, uh, add any non-conformities. Uh, which, when you look at the property, is a remarkable statement to be able to make. It's a very unusually shaped lot. Uh, it's very difficult to place a building on the lot, uh, but they've done so. And the building that's there is the building that is essentially going to stay. Uh, in nineteen ninety-five, they requested and received relief from this board, uh, both a special permit and a, uh, variance. That allowed them to change in the W M D district of property that was being used for, uh, at the time it was called industrial. It was a, uh, a furniture making shop, uh, although it was, it was only intermittently, I think, used for that purpose in nineteen ninety-five. And there was a residential unit there as well. So it was mixed in the W M D. Uh, the board permitted the, uh, change of use to a three-family residential, uh, building. And that's the status that it has today. Uh, we had a couple of challenges before we were able to bring a project to the board. Uh, we found that there was an encroachment that hadn't been previously found on surveys that had to be resolved. And in our memorandum, you can see that we have, uh, seven easements aside to resolve that encroachment, uh, for all the, uh, title holders going forward. Uh, we also had to record the nineteen ninety-five early, uh, that hadn't been done. It's been done now. So with respect to the project, if you can, uh, get the next slide. The Two Whites Court is essentially a U-shaped parcel, uh, and the two ends of the U are the frontage. And because of a peculiarity in the, uh, zoning bylaw in City of Newburyport. Uh, we're allowed to use, as I read the bylaw, one side of the U. We can take the larger of the two sides of the U as our frontage. That gives us twenty-one feet of frontage. So we're, we're non-conforming in lot area. There's about sixty-three hundred feet. Uh, in frontage, uh, the front side and rear setbacks because of the unusual configuration of a lot. Uh, are, uh, non-conforming. Lot coverage is non-conforming and open space on the lot. Is non-conforming. So that's the circumstance that we find ourselves in today. Uh, with respect to all of those non-conformities, only one is going to change. Lot coverage is going to change by one percent. Under the project that we, uh, that we propose. It's going to go from forty-seven to forty-eight percent. Uh, beyond that, uh, all the non-conformities are going to stay the same. There will be two, uh, dimensional changes. Uh, we have requested relief in, uh, in three areas of the project. Uh, if you can go to slide three. That's our lot. Uh, you can see the two sides of the U and the twenty-one foot frontage. Is on the lower side of the U as it's, uh, depicted on that slide. We're going to put a small portico. On the north side of the building. Uh, just above what will be the entryway to the two units. Uh, that is not enclosed. It's not a mudroom of any type. It's a shed roof with two pillars. That, uh, hold it up, uh, by the, uh, by the step, the entryway. And it's that area, uh, which doesn't add to the footprint of the building technically. Because it's not part of the building technically, but it does add that one percent of the lot coverage. It's essentially a rounding error, uh, that you see there. Then on the east side of the building, there's a, uh, deck that's being built, uh, that's proposed to be built. Along the east side, but on the second floor only. Uh, there'll be space underneath the, uh, underneath that deck. Uh, but for the stairway to provide access and egress. Uh, then the other change that, uh, is proposed in the project is an increase in the height. From twenty feet at the mean to twenty-five feet at the mean, which is permitted under the bylaw of the W M D. Uh, district. So twenty-five feet is, uh, is not non-conforming, uh, it conforms in the W M D. If we, uh, if we take a look at the various, uh, such, uh, sections of the requested relief, uh, perhaps slide number six. Uh, that is the current state of the north side of the building. And the proposed north side of the building after the project. The portico is what you see in the lower right-hand corner of the drawing. And you can see the construction of the east. Uh, deck along the, what would be the riverside of White's Court. Uh, the, the height is improved, the dormers are removed. Uh, and the new mean height, as I say, is twenty-five feet, which fits within the, uh, the W M D district. Uh, slide number seven. Slide seven shows the, uh, the property and the roof line, which is changing. Uh, that's significant because Two Whites Court is also in the D C O D. Uh, it doesn't affect us as a matter of, uh, permitting, I don't believe, in that the building was built in nineteen seventy. Uh, it is identified as an intrusion on the district data sheets. And, uh, and perhaps you could tell by looking at it that it doesn't have any particular historical significance, either by. Its construction or architecture, uh, or its contact with any particular historical event or individual. So the, uh, the D C O D, while it's technically a, uh, demolition to change the roof line. Uh, our roof line will change without, uh, without impacting the D C O D. Uh, slide number eight, please. And this is the east side of the building as it currently is on the left and as it's proposed on the right. Uh, you can see that we've gone to a great deal of trouble to try to beautify the building, uh, and make it, uh, more pleasant. For what is a very tight neighborhood. Uh, by making these changes, we're able to, uh, reduce the number of units. Uh, give, uh, Mr. LaBarba and his, uh, son and daughter-in-law and their grandchildren. Uh, the space that they need to park four cars on the lot, which for two residential units is appropriate. Uh, and, uh, to, I think, I, I think it's fair to say to beautify the building for the, for the purpose of the, uh, of the neighbors and the neighborhood. Uh, the board has received, I think, a number of letters in support of the project from the abutters. And people who are a little more far-fetched than the abutters are, uh, indicating that the, uh, project would be appropriate. Uh, that it would be attractive and that, uh, they were, uh, familiar. Uh, with Mr. Bernbaum and his family, with Mr. LaBarba and his family, and they thought that it was an appropriate thing to do to try to keep them in the neighborhood. Uh, again, the effect of the relief would be, uh, uh, not to create any new non-conformities. Uh, there would be a one percent increase in the lot coverage due only to that small, uh, shed-covered portico. Uh, there'd be a reduction in use from three units to two, and therefore a concomitant reduction in parking and density. Uh, and Mr. Greenbaum and his family would have enough room then to continue to raise their daughters in the neighborhood in which they, uh, in which they were born. Uh, I think you have the letters to support them, uh, before you. I won't go into any further detail unless, uh, the board requires it.
All right, thank you, Jerry Tucker. Um, with that presentation complete, we'll close the presentation portion of the, uh, of the hearing. And we'll go to, uh, public comment. And as you can see, there's the, uh, card up, and that is mostly for folks online, but not exclusively. Um, so we will. See if there's anyone in the room who wishes to speak in connection with the application first, then we'll go to our online participants. Uh, if there are any there, there are. Um, so, uh, in the room, does anyone wish to speak in connection with the application for against or simply speak? Uh, you're welcome to have a floor and just give your name and address for our keeper of the record, please. Taking notes from both ends of the evening. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else who wishes to speak in connection with the application? Going once, going twice, and, uh, we'll go to our online attendees. Uh. Does anyone, uh, who is logged in online via Zoom wish to, uh, be heard? If so, just please just click your. Raise hand icon will recognize you and give you the floor. Seeing no hands. Going once, going twice. Uh, okay, we will close that portion, uh, the public comment portion of the. Public hearing and we'll go into questions from the board. Uh, we'll begin with Mr. Swanton.
Uh, I have no questions. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, this, uh, Attorney Tucker, I, I know you're here for both of variance on the special permit. I'm just struggling. Maybe you can clarify what, why do you need a variance or what is the variance from for this? I'm, I'm, I, I don't.
The variance is for, it's a dimensional variance for the lot coverage issue.
But that's one percent.
That's the one percent.
That's, that's the variance request.
It is. It's essentially a modification of the variance that was granted in ninety-five.
Okay, but that's, yes, okay. So it's modifying an existing variance. But we're here calling the variance.
Understood.
Got you. All right, thank you. That's all.
All right, uh, Mr. Chen.
I've got all the questions. That was my question as well. Thank you. I can sit on the other side. I've got all the questions. Ms. Gao.
I don't have any other questions.
Um, with regard to the variance, is it any consequence that the variance that was granted in nineteen ninety-five was a use variance, not a dimensional variance?
Uh, well, only in that the modification includes going from three to two, which is something. Which is a change in use. We've included that in our special permit.
Right.
Application.
Yeah, I understand, um, that part. I was just curious about.
Yeah, I understand um that part. I was just curious about the fact that the relief that is the variance was not. It was not a dimen- it was not dimensional, but but related to the use. And I didn't know if there was any uh particular importance to that distinction.
I, I wouldn't attach too much importance to it. I think that I could have perhaps written it the other way. Uh, upon zoning review and a conversation with uh the office. Uh, they understood it that way.
Okay.
And I didn't have a problem understanding it that way.
Okay.
Thank you, Miss Pecking.
Yes, and I appreciate that question. I'm just curious, where was the encroachment?
The encroachment is, uh, if you have your backup slide five. It's a more uh. Thank you. It's a uh, it's not quite as distorted. Oh, I'm sorry. It's the site. Never will. Uh, if you'll notice in the uh east. On the east side. Of the, of the lot. The garage runs across the line from two whites court to eight whites court. And until this survey, that for, for whatever reason, uh, no one picked up on it on the survey. So we drafted and recorded an easement. Uh, to benefit two whites court and burden eight whites court in perpetuity so that the building can remain. Uh, and be repaired and so forth from the uh, from the eight whites court side. Uh, without causing any more disturbance between possible landowners in future.
Kind of thank you, Mr. Ch.
Thank you. Um, I uh, I don't have any other questions that haven't already been addressed either. So unless there's any further questions by the board, uh, we will close the. Questions from the board section of our public hearing and going to deliberations, beginning with Mister Swanton and. Um, just for purposes of efficiency, we can deliberate uh both the variance application criteria uh to the extent you wish to address that as well as. The special permit in uh, you know, in your deliberations, just feel free to address them as you see fit, but if you could address them both. In the first passing, that'll allow us to get all of that uh information out of them, please. Just one.
Um, yeah, um. Well, I think for this type of lot uh going from three to two. Houses is plus. There are no new non-conformities. The uh issue around the one percent additional coverage because of the portico, I mean, that's. It's two columns and a root. And then to me, that's. I know that this, the definition, the meaningness, that it is small. Um. They're supportive of butters. Uh, I appreciate your pictures. I showed a picture of the building and the plan next to it from different angles. I don't think the pictures of the building did it justice. I think it's, it's actually in real life, it's even a little more. Challenging ability. Um, so I think this uh, this is a big improvement uh for the neighborhood. Um. So for all those reasons, I can support the both sides of this uh request.
All right. Thank you, Mister Swanton. Uh, Mister Bennett.
Yeah, I echo Mister Swanton's comments. The uh. It's, it's certainly an aesthetic improvement. Um. I would agree that. Uh, you can say the number of units from three to this kind of this situation certainly makes some sense given the type quarters there. The one percent increases to minimalism. You bet. Uh, so for those reasons, I'm going to improve the neighborhood and we'll support.
Very good. Uh, Mister Chen.
Uh, yes, I'll start by saying I can support the both applications, but the, I was excited to see that um. The hurdle for the variances is four bullets. And the hurdle for the special permit is nine. That's quite rare that we have an inverse of that. Usually the variance has a, a stronger burden of proof. Uh, but I went through the nine for the, for the special permit and I, I have to agree with my colleagues that I think uh. Think it does meet the hurdle and I do think that the. These changes are small enough that uh we can, we can find them acceptable and uh they are more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I can support it.
Thank you, Mister Chen. Uh, Miss Gal.
Um, I also think the project looks like a big improvement to the neighborhood and, and I did go through the bullets and I agree that the, the nine bullets for the special permit. Seem to meet them all. Um, and looking at the variance, I guess. My question is, it, it seems to require that um. Literal enforcement of the provisions, the ordinance would involve a substantial hardship. Um, if it, if it weren't granted, and I'm just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit in terms of. What your, what your view is of how it, it meets that criteria.
Well, I think the, I think the hardship that we've identified is that uh Mister LaBarba and his uh son-in-law and daughter and family. Uh, would have to leave. Uh, they have, they have two small children now. Property's been uh acceptable to this point. But they're, it's a six-year-old girl and a two-year-old girl. And I've had two girls myself. They're going to need some space. And it's just not available on a lot of this. Um, on a lot of this configuration and in the building of this construction.
Yeah, the lot is unique. Sure. Um. I guess my only concern with that is we hear a lot of. Cases here that, that talk about, you know, people wanting to expand for family reasons and I did. Just be interested to hear from other board members as to whether or not that's generally considered. Um, a hardship. Um, it doesn't usually come in that context, I guess, actually. That was my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Miss Gal. I'm Mr. Moon.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Yeah, um, I think the uh, the special permit has been covered over pretty well. Um, with respect to the variance, I think that we're looking to uh, as Attorney Tucker said, to modify the variance that exists. So I think. We have the benefit of the findings that were. Uh, made in nineteen ninety five where they hit these points pretty well and they have a, a decision. Um, and I don't think that there's anything different here today, so I, I can support uh both prongs of this application.
No, thank you. And uh, Mr. Pecking.
Yeah, thank you for that exchange. Um, I agree with the gentleman from Pop Crowley Way. This is my neighborhood. I walk by there all the time. I think it's very. Uh, it's, if you go down that hill and it's tucked in there and I just, oh, it's sorry, I'm walking past there and it's like someone. Someone's gonna do something with that. It's gonna be such a great location. So, yeah, I, I would support it as well.
I am. I would have to agree. I, I actually, as a uh, as a, I'm, I'm always told by those that grew up in Newburyport that I'm a newcomer and if I. Once I lived here a thousand years. So be a newcomer. Not a man, but um, I, when I grew up in Newburyport in ninety five, I actually lived in one in Merrimack Street, so right on Pop Crowley. In fact. Uh, I just missed the pleasure of ever having met. The actual Pop crowd, although I know people who have, I've shaken the hand of those who have shaken the hand of the Pop crowd, so. Um, but I know this space. I've walked that road. I've walked up and down that area. In fact, um, uh, I was on this board. Um. I've been on this board since oh two and I recall when uh, when you were last before us. Uh, which seems like yesterday, yet it was many, many years ago, which I can't believe, but. Um, uh, we, you, it's, it's funny to see again. I, I'd like to see this um. This restorative reuse and thoughtful adaptive reuse of these, you know, this part of the built environment in our city. Um, uh, and um, it is nice to see folks sort of generationally plan for and. Uh, and make usable what has sort of fallen out of um. I won't say relevance, but out of just its highest and best utility in our time. So it's nice to see people invest in those efforts to have it stay in the family uh is important. And uh, you know, as a sort of a member of the city, as an adopted family, it's nice to see that lineage and that legacy carry bones. Like many points to that. Uh, and thank you for the thoughtful measure in trying to bring this to us. I certainly can support it. My colleagues have articulated the reasons why. Um, but I just wanted to add that, which I know is, but um. Was there anything further? And thank you for the indulgence, my colleagues, but let me say that. Um, anything further, any other deliberations before we close? All right, I'm seeing no further deliberations. We'll close the deliberations and uh I will write a uh. Uh, a motion to approve on both. We'll do the variance first and then we'll do separately a uh motion second and a vote on the special permits. So we have a motion uh on the variance.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance uh for the application for two whites court variance twenty two dash six.
Second, Mr. Swanton. Thank you. Motion made by Mister Delilah and seconded by Mister Swanton, calling the role on Mister Swanton.
Yes.
Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Mister Chen.
Yes.
Uh, Miss Gal.
I'm not voting.
You're not voting on this. Uh, Mister, Mister Delilah.
Yes.
And Rob Chappetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. Thank you. I'm just saying. We're gonna throw in an extra vote. Um, we have a motion to approve the special permit.
I'll make the motion again um to approve the special permit for two whites court CSP twenty two dash six.
Second, Mr. Swanton. All right, motion made again by Mister uh Delilah and seconded by Mister Swanton. Calling the role on the motion to approve the special permit. Uh, Mister Swan.
Yes.
Mister Bennett.
Yeah.
Mister Shannon.
Yes.
Mister Delilah.
Yes.
Rob Chappetti, I vote yes. That's also five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Remember, you're a board member, Charlie.
Yeah, we're gonna take a quick uh, quick moment, I think. Um, uh, which is to use our, use our restroom break as of the time. And uh, you know, when uh, when you folks were last here, I think it was Joe Sullivan that represented you and I remember he was, I remember this vividly. Well, I, you know, he was, he was one of the supporters.
Oh, he was. You know, Mark Griffin.
Mark Griffin. And Mark Griffin, thank you. Mark, Mark could describe uh the uh the people places like he, he said. My, he said, my clients uh run a uh, a nice little weekend business. I've never heard of weekend business, but boy, would I love that weekend business. I'll never forget that. I tease him all the time. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. I think it's just one of the guys that when I, Joe, Joe was one of, one of the early sort of like native guys I got. People with those with, but he had a great brothers, um, Kevin and Joe, handful of those who were, but I, I just remember he, you know. He used to talk about when he was a kid going down, you know, that part of the.
Yeah, yeah. Joe, the very good that he played market.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
That's Joe. The whole song, the, the song at the time, they were always very, they were very gracious and very welcoming. My wife and my money. And to be honest, I now fly and I personally to the airport. They were. They had handful of others who just walked us right on. They had seen, very, very easy to feel like a member of. You know, it was hard to, it was hard to. It's hard to believe that we hadn't grown up. And so instantly, oh, we're through. That's why I think that's what I thought of Joe. All right. Good evening, folks. Welcome. Um, let's see, we are um. Finished with our front of hearings, we're gonna go into the business meeting. Uh, and uh, we have. One, uh, two, we have a few matters on our business meeting, the first of which is a request for a minor modification, twenty one Walnut Street. Uh, and uh, I believe we have uh the owners and applicants sitting before us. And good evening, folks. Uh, you were outside. I'm Rob Chappetti on the chair. We have. A member of the Z B A who introduced earlier on and we are all here uh to hear your request. And so thank you for your patience sitting outside and with that, um, you have the floor and you, if you would mind, just kindly give your name and address so we know it. Uh, just for um, uh, our keeper of the, of the minutes.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, this is Nora Dodge, Jeff Dodge. Um, this is our. Uh, renovated home on twenty one Walnut Street. Um, and I think there are two items on the docket, one of which is sidewalk repair.
This is great.
Three.
Yes, a way to trellis.
A trellis.
Tree and.
Oh, the tree, right. Okay. So um, the sidewalk repair, I don't, I saw something that was written about that. And we're waiting for the public works to go and confirm with, we have a landscaper that's ready to. Uh, do a patch to take care of the tripping hazard.
They stopped.
Pardon?
Just stopped.
Yeah, yeah, he's dealt it out. We're just waiting for decisions on that and as soon as we get approval. We'll make that uh, that Dixon. Would have been to go. So this first one. Second one, the tree, um. I, I, I think that's up to you all in terms of, do you want to put a tree in this little spot that exists in front of the house? There's a tree here now. And then there is also a um, a telephone pole. That if you, if you put a tree in the middle, there's not a ton of space where you can actually make it work. So the question is, do you want to put a tree in that space? There again. I, I would, I would argue, it's a little crowded there.
I think there are in terminal.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought that was decided.
Well, I think you still have to, well, one, was that it?
Oh, I see. That's what.
But it was.
I'm sorry, I was not here.
You weren't.
Last time around. And then the final one is the trellis. Um. And. Our, our, you know, we, we would like to not put the trellis there. I know it was part of the original design. Um. You now have a tree that sort of occupies what, what is a. You know, I, I guess you'd call it a void. Um. And, you know, if you want us to pick a trellis there, we'll do it, but we would argue that. You know, would, in, in, in looking at a lot of other Greek the bibles, um, I've, I've seen that void in other places where the trellis doesn't exist and or a door. Um, or a tree, yeah. Um, it would be very hard to, you know. Grow any kind of plantings up that trellis based on what happened from a landscape standpoint. There's a bunch there um, along the uh side of the house, you can see. Um, it's granite underneath pebble. So in terms of plantings, it would be, be a tough go. Um, so it would be basically a trellis that would just. You know, stand up against the. The hardy ground. Uh, and that was the purpose of putting a big tree there. We knew that there was going to be a void there. Um, and so. Yeah, that, shame on us for not coming forward to this committee ahead of time. I, you know.
Interesting.
Didn't know the rules and regulations, so that's my bad. Uh, but uh, you know, we would, we would like to ask for people to not move forward to that, but you know. Committee feels like we should, then so be it.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Mister Dodge. And uh, was there anything further that you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I think, you know, we're gonna do what we're supposed to do, so.
Great. Um, well, I appreciate that. Uh, okay, so uh, members of the Z B A, we have before us uh during the business meeting, a request for a minor modification. Uh, our. Um, our duties uh are to determine on the record whether we uh feel it is in fact uh minor for this request or so. Whether um, we um, in the midst of our collective approval, so. Um, I'll just, we'll go around the horn and um, sorry to Mister Swanton on thoughts and, and then we can now establish whether we have. Thought it out enough to proceed with the vote or whether we will uh. Find him a friend.
Uh, yeah, from my perspective, and there's three parts here. The tree. Now, I've been over there and. Eating pork, sent us some pictures today and I don't see. I might have a big problem not planting a tree there. There's already a telephone, there's already another tree very close to it. Um. The uh sidewalk, there's a big sidewalk and I guess the proposal is to have your guys somehow smooth that out. I'm fine with that. I'm not quite sure exactly what the wording is, although I think it means set us in post words. So that, so, so I think with that warning, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, maybe the trellis, I mean, this is. I remember this meeting like it was yesterday. Uh, and you know, you guys had spent some time with the store commission. Finally got their agreement to remove the door that's been there for hours as to help them build uh and replace that form with a trellis that was part of the compromise. We started with it here. We agreed to reinforce that compromise. To me, it's just. It's not good to, I think, drop it out now. So I, I really have a problem with that and. I'd say it's not gross. So if you can grow a tree there, you can grow the bulk, if you really want to grow something on the trellis, it's not, not. I tell you, stuff grows. So if you can grow a tree there, you can grow the bulk, if you really want to grow something on the trellis, it's not, not, it's not requiring a trellis or something growing on it, but. You know, we started buying downward trees, you know, fall up the trellis, you know, on it. Stuff grows everywhere in this house. Stuff grows in the middle of the street. Anyway, so I, it's getting late, so I just, I cut to it on those three. It's kind of worrying.
Okay, um, Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, I agree. I, for some reason, I have this uh. Desire to see the trellis be maybe caged here, and uh. I, I think I like it. I like it aesthetically, that that's just my opinion, but also I think the notion that, that. Trellis was the result of probably some careful thought and consideration, please, we believe that we should not simply abandon. You know, uh, our parents. I agree with that, Mr. Swan.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, I have to agree with my colleagues. I remember when this came before the board, the. It was quite a bit of discussion of moving the door and replacing it with a trellis to keep it. Having that reliable feel on that side of the building. So I, I, I do have trepidation just tossing it out. Mind you, you can put it up and still put trees in front of it, and you wouldn't see it from the road. Uh, so I, I'd have a. I think I'd have trouble agreeing with Charles' portion of the, of the three requests. The other two I'm fine with. But I, I, I too agree with Mr. Swan. I think the trellis was a, was an important replacement of the door that was there for. You know, many years, many decades. Miss Dow.
Thanks.
I think it's just a difficult position to, to put the board into change, something that was, you know, there's a lot of compromise that goes into. The initial. Decisions. And you don't know why somebody voted yes, and to change, come back and, and change it, I think. It's a very high bar, maybe, you know, the tree, it can't be planted, so people think it's, you know, people can make a decision that, that it isn't necessary, but. From all the comments I've heard, you know, the board spent a lot of time thinking about the trellis, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't support changing the plan.
All right, Mr. Delisle. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna agree. Yeah, Miss Penn.
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Strongly.
All right, um, you know, I um, I feel that um, well, and as we went around. I imagine, does anyone disagree with the conclusion that this is in fact a minor modification, that we can address it in this manner? Uh, does anyone feel contrary to that, which would escalate into a major modification requiring butter notice and. And uh, the uh, applicants having to take a step back and come back before, and so that's sort of the threshold in quote. Am I, is it fair to say we all agree this is minor? My, okay, no, I disagree. So, okay, great. So that's, that's part one. Part two. Uh, is uh, I, I too, you know, I too agree that the, the spirit of the original um. Approval, which had the benefit of um, a uh. Sort of a collaborative. Effort, including a butters and other stakeholders, as well as, of course, yourselves. Um, it was a thoughtful process that resulted in this, so I. I think you, you've heard that with the sentiment of board, it seems resounding that. There's an affinity felt with respect to that architectural element, at least that one of the three things, so I tend to agree as well. Um. So uh, but I support the other, the other two um. Of the three, it's just that, that trellis creates a um. An architectural reference to its architectural period that was important to us at the time, I think. Certainly wasn't me, but. Any other thoughts um, before we proceed?
Man, it just doesn't.
And yeah, when I actually was gonna ask uh, Mr. Dodge.
Yeah, you just mentioned on the butters. Uh, situation on that.
Not really a butters, but it had full notice. Um, it was a full, when it came before us, it was an application that came before us with the benefit of. Full legal notice, and if I'm not mistaken, we, we, you know, had the um, it was a full hearing, so it had. That benefit. It's now back before us with a small request for a change, uh, which is what we call under, under the zoning, it's a minor modification, so you have the benefit of being carried without. Having to renotice and.
No, I understand that, but you, in terms of, I, I thought you were alluding to way back when there was been a butters situation that was calling up the question that.
No, 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 I just mentioned.
Okay.
It was a conversation that was inclusive and collaborative um, beyond those that are now in this room now. And so when we are faced with a minor modification request, it's, it's not lost unless often that. We, we're being asked to sort of um, short circuit that, that full row process from prior, you know, the prior version of that application in favor of something that's just. Very narrowly tailored to this one issue without the benefit of new notice and that whole, um, you know, that whole uh, public comment component. And so when we're asked to do that, we do. With a sharp eye toward, you know, all right, this, this first has to be determined to be. Not significant enough to warrant that, and it seems like the board is down, and feels that this is in fact minor, so. We don't want you to leave without. You know, with, with, have a benefit of, of us voting on this so that you can leave with a zone. Uh, versus. Having even, we have to republish and come back before us, and uh, it's a full hearing, so we want to do that. Um. All right, well, uh, I don't have anything further to add, and is there anything further that any revolutions to add before we? Um, we endeavor to uh, to vote. On the request. And uh, uh, do you both wish to say anything further or add anything?
My, my, my final comment, I guess, is if we were to go way back into the archives of the other hearings, there was a comment made by one of the members um. As it relates to the, the, the door that was being removed, was a fire hazard. And so.
If it was, if it was something, if it was a fake.
In other words, we were, because of the construction of the house, it would have been a fake door, and therefore the fake door would have been a fire hazard, so. It was, you know, the, the. Um, opinion of the group that, yes, you should get rid of that door.
Right.
So.
I recall that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because a, 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 a door that isn't a real door, you know, invites access and egress in an emergency.
Correct.
Someone could waste critical time trying to get out of a door that will never open.
Or into a door.
Right.
Like the fire department.
So it's not. It's not, it's, it's not surprising that, that saying, you know, that's, it seems like almost a. Like an emergency responder trap, you know, uh, sort of. So I, I recall that vaguely, but I certainly, uh, I don't recall, but I, I understand the context of that, and. I don't disagree with the rationale, but I think the board, when this was back before us, what I recall was that. In lieu of that balance. Well, harking back to a period when the interior architecture allowed for an operative, an operative door.
It was also a two-family house.
Right, right.
Now it's a one-family.
True. I don't disagree with you.
Right, but it's, it's important to understand what. You all are holding on to, which is this, this side door that you seem to be very attached to. It didn't work in the plan because it's now a one-family home. It was historic, asked us to put a fake door, which we just had the conversation that it didn't make sense for various reasons. So we thought, in the plan, you don't see any foliage, you don't see trees, you don't see any shrubbery, so it looked, it looked so vacant. So we thought, let's put something architectural, an ornament. A trellis to fill that void. Then during construction, we see that it's a problem to put plantings there. So that you've said, well, maybe we don't need plantings, just put a trellis, just keep it without plantings, which is not really an ideal. Trellis use. So that's all. It's, it's more than just, we got rid of the door.
No, no, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I certainly, I empathize and I respect that. I love. If my colleagues won't build me an extra moment, I know it's late. What about, if I might pose this, you know, what about potted um, mandevilla or sorts or other kinds of?
I love that. It's beautiful, but because we have an eighteen-inch, about an eighteen-inch. Concrete um, perimeter goes around the perimeter of the foundation.
Right.
And then the plantings begin about eighteen-inch, you know, here's eighteen inches, it's hard to kind of get something meandering up the trellis. I think.
We're wandering outside, I've heard you anyway, but I just.
So we just.
Question, because this is, this is.
Understood.
You know, this is how I'm thinking.
I'm just trying to explain to you that we didn't just randomly do this. We were advised by our landscapers, it would be difficult to. Grow something onto the trellis, and we just thought it would look really strange, have just a trellis. Stuck up there. It's kind of like a wooden shutter, you just pop it up there. So that's our, just, I just want you to fully understand where we're coming from. We don't mean to disrespect those, that, you know, we got rid of the door.
I, I, I appreciate that. Um. Okay, um, anything else? Any, any thoughts in respect, with respect to that? If not, um, do we have a, and thank you for that extra moment. I appreciate that. Any, uh, if there are no additional comments, we can have the motion.
Is, is it three separate things?
Yeah, it's gonna have to say it works.
And so I'll make a motion. Respect to removing special condition, so it's a tree. That uh. We move to um. Consider request minor to not do that. I don't, I don't get said that really long.
I mean, I'm making brackets.
Yeah, I have it written in front of me, so.
Yeah.
Well, if you have to do that.
Yeah.
Uh.
All the same, all three of the same.
Motion to consider the request for the street tree minor and approve the request for the minor modification to special permit. For non-conformities twenty-twenty dash seventy-one. And special permit twenty-twenty dash seventy for twenty-one, twenty-three.
Seconded, well said.
Okay, um, motion been made and seconded, um, calling the role, and this is a uh, roll call for everyone. Um, and um, we'll start, Mr. Swonkin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Miss Dow.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Miss Peckman.
Yeah.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is seven. Seven in the affirmative. Uh, the eyes have it, motion carries. Uh, we have a motion on the second.
Yeah, this is uh, on the sidewalk. So we have that special. More language from Andy.
Yep.
So, okay, so make the motion to consider the request uh. That the existing, to remove the condition that uh, existing sidewalk be replaced. Uh, let that be considered minor, and to approve the request for minor modification. To special permit for non-conformities twenty-twenty dash seventy-one, and special permit. Twenty-twenty dash seventy for twenty-one, twenty-three Walnut Street. So we've heard that.
No, we have any other thing?
You have it.
It's behind you.
Oh, no.
Two hundred.
So. The applicant shall be responsible for compliance with applicable provisions of sections. To be. Dot forty-six A. Comma. Roman ten dash H. Dot six dot Q. And Roman ten dash H seven V ten of the NZO with respect to the sidewalk transition at the northwest corner. Of the property's frontage on Walnut Street. As such, and in order to eliminate a tripping hazard, the applicant shall obtain written approval from the Newbury Department of Public Services. With respect to the installation of a suitable transition. Materials and or slope to be determined between the existing sidewalk along the frontage of the property. And the adjacent segment of the quote-unquote sidewalk along the frontage. Of a budding property at twenty-five Walnut Street.
Very good.
All right.
Uh, motion's made and seconded by just Flunk and calling the role, um, Mr. Flunk. Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Miss Dow.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Miss Peckman.
Yeah.
And Rob Champetti, yes, that's seventy, affirmative. Um, the eyes have it, motion carries, give that uh, additional provision. Thank you. Um, see if we're putting that uh, on the record. Um, all right, we have a motion on the third and final request.
All right, with respect to. Foregoing attaching a trellis, trellis at the side of the house, motion to consider the request minor and approve the request for minor modification to the special permit. For non-conformities twenty-twenty dash seventy-one, and special permit twenty-twenty dash seventy for twenty-one dash twenty-three Walnut Street.
I'll second that. Very good motion. It's made by Mr. Delisle, taking the second uh, call and roll on the uh. On the uh, motion, Mr. Swonkin. So this is the considerate, so I got that vote down.
If I, if I, I want them to have a trellis, so I vote no. I'm sorry, so it's correct.
Yeah, um, say no, just say.
You say it's minor, and then you say not, not.
Not, yeah, it's not mine.
No.
Oh.
Well, um, it's, it's deep minor, but um, no on the uh, substance of, on the um.
It's a minor modification.
Yeah. Okay, um, so it's for me clear, um, so. We, we're all voting on. That determining it's a minor modification as well, so they don't have to come back to the class. Uh, so as long as that's embedded in the motion, I believe it is.
Yes.
And um, poor Gretchen, who's not here but listening to us, and as the. An enviable task of writing down all this that we're saying, so she'll get that right in the minutes. Um, you voted no, correct? Yes, a minor modification, no to the subject matter of the.
I want them to have to keep the trellis and right on end.
Okay, right, um, Mr. Bennett.
I vote yes, that is a request with minor modification, and no. Respect request.
Can I?
I vote likely do.
Okay, um, Mr. Shannon.
Uh. I vote yes, that it is a minor modification, but I vote no, trellis can be.
Um, okay, um, and Miss Dow.
I vote yes, that's my modification, and no to removal of trellis.
Mr. Delisle, thank you.
Yes, minor modification, no to removal of the trellis.
And, and um, Miss Peckman.
Yes, some minor modification, and no to.
Um, although we're being the minority here, I, I vote yes to the minor modification, but I'm gonna vote yes um, to their request. I, I changed my mind. Although it's. No other consequences here, but, but um, I, I've changed my mind. Um. That said, um, okay, the um, uh, the eyes have it, uh, the motion carries, and um. Two of the three are approved, and uh, folks, uh, we got you, and thank you for your patience, and thank you for your turn. Good evening. Have a good evening. Okay, um, moving now to the approval of the minutes of nine twenty-seven. Um, do we have any changes to the minutes, any modifications of the minutes, or any motion approvals? It was exhausting.
Yes.
No, until approved. All right, well, that can be executed. Actually, I guess, motion, motion to approve the minutes as written, made, and seconded, all those in favor, this is just a point, all those in favor.
Yeah.
All right. Any votes, any no votes, abstentions, the eyes have it, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, uh, thank you again, Gretchen.
You will.
I didn't know that you can talk back to us.
You should hear what I say when you can't hear.
You're like, you're like, we're gonna, I'm gonna show my, you're like Charlie, hello.
Oh, yeah.
We're the, we're the ZBA angels, and we're the angels, you know. Um, thanks very much for all that you're doing, seriously. Um, okay, um, request for the reconsideration of section five four five, the rules and regs, I would respect them to Neptune Street. So. We have the energy, it's ten-ten, I'll open it up to whoever wants to lead off, if anyone. On whether the uh, board undertakes a request for reconsideration under the rules, um, for those, and you may all well know. Um, only someone voting in the majority um, has the standing to make a motion for reconsideration, which essentially reverts back to the board, the no vote. And unfortunately, most of us are lawyers here, and those that aren't, unfortunately, probably know, the no vote means we have to do it all over again, and so uh. Um, that's how the process works, and so that is the standing requirement, and with that, who wants to lead off? Jump in.
Should anyone that was not at the meeting?
Uh, you won't have the standing to make a motion, but you're certainly.
Have an opinion on your call.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to open it up, I don't have a problem with the reconsideration, uh, on its face. But I wasn't at the meeting, and I don't know how strongly the board was in one direction on the house.
Three to.
Yeah, the vote was three to two, three to two, uh, no, against, yeah, three to against.
Three to.
That was three to two.
So then, yeah, so a civil majority.
Right, and so um, so that means that it is, it is a member who voted in the majority. Uh, which was a favorable or insufficient majority, a civil majority, but not a super majority.
And then.
According to the fourth edition of the notes on Rogers. The purpose of reconsidering votes to quote, prevent correction of H G ill-advised. The purpose of reconsidering votes to quote, prevent correction of H G ill advised or erroneous action. Or to take into account added information or a change situation that developed since the taking of the vote. Therefore, I see not known.
In, in fairness, and I know that, um, and I respect that you quoted that, cause that's, um, that, that's great, there's not many people. Who would among us actually do that stuff, but. Change of mind, well, yes, a change of mind is included in change of circumstance. Uh, you know, and so that, that very malleable factor is also not excluded from the purpose of reconsideration. It's simply a reflection and change of sentiment, change of heart, um, for.
Oh, I was thinking that the change of sentiment had to be grounded in new facts or. A realization that one had not considered all the information.
Yeah, it, it's, it, it is, it is, it is that, uh, but it is also a, um, a change in one sense of whether they properly applied. Us, the standard of review at the time and whether they, they aired in their.
I see.
So, so that, that is, it, it's inclusive of, hey, you know what? I, 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 it was late, I was tired and quickly, or. Hey, I just didn't really think of everything, uh, you know, keep in mind that this is an imperfect process, we, we're asked to give judicial like review. On the spot, like with little notice, right, and, and we're, we're faced with. The battle of the legal memorandum, if you can imagine such a thing, right, and so a well researched, well written, presumably. Well thought out document that articulates legal criteria arguments for or against are presented to us in writing and orally argued on the spot and, you know. We're not required to be, thank God, like, members of the legal profession, but even those among us who are, are hard pressed, and any rational person is hard pressed. To really like be able to give full review of the stuff like that, which is thrown at us, you know. In a sequence of others waiting to be heard, so I think it's, you know, I've been on this board, um, long enough where I've only seen it happen once, maybe twice. Um, and, uh, I, um, I've seen it come back for, for reasons like that, in fact, it was part of that, it was. What's behind, um, some little hamburger shop right, right next to Port Tavern, what?
Oh, like, 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 like Prince Place, you remember when Prince Moran had done the project on Prince Place, there was that. Penthouse, do you remember?
It's right next to the library across from Prince Place, that was the one I remember as part of, that the only one that came back before us for, um. Reconsideration and what was a no became a yes, and it was because a few members just felt like, you know, I just didn't really give this enough thought at the time. And, um, they just applied the same facts and the same criteria, but came to a different result, which is. Interesting, but that doesn't mean that's what we have to do, um.
The, the other thing that I took into account was the note from the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
So I remember she'd come before us before with several contingencies. She made the argument that she realized we were going to a vote and she was lose.
Mm-hmm.
She may have drawn. When she, what she did before.
That, that's, you know, and, and she was pro day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. That's the other thing, you know, someone marshaled over the, you know, over the sort of, over the gravity of the slip without realizing technically that there's procedural exit. That they just had to speak up quickly. That's really sort of holding someone adversely accountable for the fact that they're not an attorney, that they're not versed in this, you know, this process, and I think that. In balance and fairness, it wouldn't be. It, it wouldn't be irrational for us to say, well, all right. Had they known, would they have said, would they have tapped the brakes and said, wait, wait, I'm gonna take a sharpie pencil with this? We would often, if not almost always, give that individual the opportunity to step back and refine it and try to come back better.
Right, to your point, if, if the attorney need was here and saw this thing going off the cliff, she would, she would have hit the brake.
You know, like, the chair, chair, I would, you know, draw or, yeah, continue. I, I, I will own that too, because in the absence of someone in that position, I try to keep an eye out for that and give someone. You know, a quick pause and say, listen, this is about to happen.
Yeah, usually before one, I usually do that.
And I, I don't know why, I, I feel an ownership here because I missed that somehow.
That didn't happen, and I would follow that point, that resonates with me, that, that seems to be our. Operating procedure.
For sure.
Um, and I understand. Yeah, I, I understand this, that I, I, I don't want her to be, you know, vote shopping here, right, I mean. She can count the numbers as well, but, but there is some, that resonates a bit with me, that typically we give the applicant, well, you know, it's gonna be, if you wanna. Go back and sharpen your pencil and such and such, but, um.
I, I think in this matter, the applicant had a lot of experience in front of this board, and, um, I think she knew, but, you know, I, I, I can't say, I think she knew what, she knew what it. She should have known what the procedure was and that when we were finished with our deliberation, we'd go to a vote and. The other, the, the other thing that, that resonates strongly to me is that, unlike. Most of our applicants, since we have, uh, shifted back to, uh, in person, we're hybrid meetings. She's, she's on the phone, she never know, I don't think we've had.
She might not.
I think that's. Yeah.
Yeah. So you're, you're feeling, Steve, that, um, that because there was that sort of sensory deprivation of the room and reading our, reading the board members, basically, that maybe she, she was. A half a step behind what was happening and didn't respond, like, it wasn't that.
No, the, I'm going to the outside of that. She should have, there was, it was incumbent upon the applicant to, you know.
Yeah.
To be here.
Uh, go ahead.
I, I will also say that the plan that the board was presented with was. Very, very similar to the plan that the board was poised to deny. You know, a year and a half earlier, the upper extension dimension were exactly the same, the former was inserted differently. So plans had been. To extend then on the verge of being denied, continued, 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 but I, I think the board was looking at a plan that was. Really different from the very first one in May of twenty twenty one.
I will. Also, I think that she, you know, has a, has a good case for, you know, going to court with abusive discretion, because. I know that they have to, she has to come because of the existing non conformities to this board. But the reason that, you know, that people voted no was because they didn't like. The dormers, right, which, which the city has made a decision, a public policy matter, that if not for the existing non conformity, those dormers would have been allowed on that building by right. So I think that that is.
Yeah.
If I were her, I'm not going to court, and, and she feels like it's time to go to court, so that's something to. Take into consideration as to, she's probably not gonna let it drop if. And I don't know how the court would, would rule on that, I, I just don't know the answer.
Yeah, I, I, on that point, I mean. In your sentence, you said, if it wasn't for the fact they were like right on top of the street, but that was the whole dis. Yeah, that was.
And that's one, that's part of our charge under the, uh.
I understand.
Ninety-two location.
And it's actually not such a thing as a, as a conforming dormer in terms of this. Or it means that it's exempt from historical permission review to these dimensional requirements, but it's still outward extension. And so that's. That was the ground for my objections, that was words, that much, you know, mass.
But I'm just.
Oh, I don't care if it's just worth, I don't want that much mass in that, that much height on that close to the street.
If I could make one other comment, the, uh, we were talking earlier about did this applicant know or help, you know, what the process is, and. Actually went back and printed out. Each of the times we were on this topic, and five times last year. We got to a point of denial and they continued, but.
Those applications on, on this.
To Neptune. To Neptune. Yeah. In May, the next month, in June, next month, you know, they took a month off because we didn't have enough of a form.
It wasn't more, but.
So my point is. Yeah, it was four, but my point is. It's not like somebody who, who's not familiar with the process. There is somebody who kept presenting, in my opinion, side revisions of the same thing. And kept pulling it back. Until.
I represent a go to prosecution, just getting mad that applicant just. Unrepresented by.
Always, she was always by a side.
No, no, no. The first tattoo, you've said my time.
Well, actually, the first three times, the first three times, the next three last year, she was not, so it's.
They're not unfamiliar with, uh, mechanics.
I think, I think after, after you do it five times. Yeah.
I think.
Make aside. Very much, I just have massive issues that folks experience.
Okay, so.
I, I, I got, you know, respecting your time and the hour, um, but also the importance of grassing was, I guess, you know. I appreciate everybody who was coming from on this, I think that. Discussing it all together and out loud on site on spot is important for us to sort of revive our memory, but also, you know, give. Give, um, focus. You know, give focused thought to this request, so that we're, you know, we'll be very. Different than whatever we decide. This is, you know, our dockets full and getting no less full, so. You know, it isn't without impact upon the administration of this word that. You know, someone is being, really giving an opportunity back, so we, we weigh that in the balance and balance of that equity with. Somebody having gotten there, yeah, that's always important, in my opinion, hyper important. You know, the administration of our work and how the public perceives its balance and fairness and empathy is always important, but. Balance, fairness and empathy like all else in the world, you know, having lived. Because we, we live in a world of limits, right, you know, we, we have to at some point say when, so if. That is now, this is the application, when we say when, that we, uh, we should take the vote and we should, um. We should see where we fall, but it sounds like what I'm hearing that. Everyone seems to be, was, there was, there wasn't sort of the, um. The, um, inexperienced applicant that was just caught in the switches and, you know, things are moving faster than they were keeping pace with, but rather, um. It was given its full and fair review and the decision was didn't go the applicant's way. And that by itself is an easy to request a reconsideration.
Sure.
Um, you know, because it didn't go your way, it is not by itself. Uh, evidence that it was not balanced and fair and thoughtful, it's just evidence that the decision making parties did not see the way. Which is. Spirit of this process, so. Do we, uh, is there anything you guys wanna add before we just take a vote and, uh, or are we ready to take a vote on this on whether to? Uh, involve reconsideration or whether to not? And since it's, it's a reconsideration, unless it makes. And it's a request, so, um, I will, um. I will invite a motion. For reconsideration and then we'll vote on that. And, uh, the no vote is evidence that you, you do not favor reconsideration. And if the majority votes no, then the matter is not reconsidered and we, we don't take it back, and then we go into the next piece, which is the review of the draft decision. Right, um, Caitlin, is that, sorry, um, if we do decide to be a bit of that, we're gonna entertain, or that's for reconsidering, then we don't take on. Number three, give. With no decision to review that. Um. And we have.
That's the point, who is, who, who has the authority to move?
Anyone, um, so anyone who, uh, voted in the majority at the application, uh, standing in the jury.
I thought it was the prevailing side.
Prevailance, I'm sorry, the prevailing side, yes.
Yeah.
Apologist, usually, um, right.
Yeah.
There's.
It isn't the minority.
This is, if ever there was a fire review question, right, and, and no more, or, or Robert's, we have a water. You know, no motion had made, then that.
Well, that motion will be made but not successful, um, so the motion, the motion should still be made, you know, and made in the affirmative and seconded, and then. Uh, a vote's taken and, uh, and a, and a no vote is, um.
But did, did, do no votes? Again, did you need a super majority to, to no votes to beat the? Uh, two no votes to beat Jeff, yeah. Yeah, if you don't need a super, sorry, I didn't think of that, too, but, oh, for the weeds.
It's the same as you reviewing the application.
Why would that be?
I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good question. Why, why, why wouldn't there be parity in super majority, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a good question, um, why don't we err on the side of, of caution and let's just. Let's, let's just hold ourselves accountable to the higher standards within this way of court.
Well, I think there is a threshold question, if neither, if neither. Chris or can move, seek to make this motion, I, I think.
If, 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 that's the end of this, right, yeah, that's the end of it, that's what, that's, that's why I was getting at it.
I, I don't think the motion, I, I don't think.
Sure, neither.
We can.
Just.
Are obligated to, to, to move or re.
And just, there's seven people voting, you need five yeses?
I'm just.
Only the people that voted can vote.
Only those original five.
I think that's what Andy's event.
Yeah. And the original five, okay. The only reason I'm kind of.
Gotcha.
Getting us with. It's not really part of Robert's rules, but it renders an affirmative. Recordable event. Versus the minutes reflecting silence, you know, is not as discernible, so I'm, I'm almost manufacturing a recordable event, which does no harm, I think. But it's not required, it's just that, um, the minutes can say that a motion was made and it was seconded and it failed. That's, that, that's a, you know, more powerful in the record than, than, you know. We waited for a little while, not sure how long we were here, then, then we were gone. You know, I, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's the, the dilemma, if you have a preference. Um, we can do that, but let's, let's just move on to new things, you know, I'm just kidding, I will do this, I'm, I'll, I'll ask everyone.
The point is, where? I asked this question at the end, that I mentioned, like, you guys.
That would be another consideration.
I'm sorry, that's okay, um, guys, let's, let's do this, let's advance this, um, so, I will, um, as, as chair, I will put it on the floor. Um, and if a motion is volleyed, then I'll ask your second, and if a motion's not volleyed. It does, it does. It's just, you know, I, I, I was, like I said, I was only trying to manufacture something that was discernible, considering. Yeah, it didn't happen, but, um. All right, um, we have a motion by. One of the, uh, members of the Z B A that voted with the. The prevailing side. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's on the application, it's a no votes, do they make, uh, is there a motion to reconsider by one of the two members, um, who voted with the prevailing? Decision of the. That is, this technique and this, the, or the other. Mister Slon. This, I'll just say, this, this, this can be recorded, Mister Flunk, do you have a motion?
No.
Uh, Mister Peckman, do you have a motion?
No.
Okay, uh, I'm hearing a motion from, um, all of the members that have standing to make a motion. Um. We, uh, as the chair, I can conclude that we are, uh, with the board is not going to undertake the request for reconsideration. Um, that request, um, was directed at us. So with that, we will move on to the review of the draft decision that is before us based on the vote we did take. Uh, and we have. And you, can we go off record just a minute?
Sure. So, so, you know, we are live and there's, um, audience.
Yeah.
People off record, then.
No, yeah, not off record. Would it be appropriate? To, to have a. Just then a vote based upon a motion to deny the question consideration.
I think the minutes would just reflect that, the motion made.
I agree, we've already, I don't, you know, Greg, I, I just have, my original sentiment was to do something that was discernible, you can, it's over captured, but, um, I, I think that, um. Gretchen's right, I mean, it's now in the record, um. No motion was made, there's, there's, it, it, we, there's something that Gretchen can record, and I just wanna be absolutely fair, we all wanna be fair to. Not just this applicant, but any applicant and the public, that when this working happens, that this process, we never take our best effort toward. Giving it its review, um.
Can I make one other, I'm reading Andy's. Andy's comments say that any one of the five that voted that night can make the motion. According to Robert's.
I, I agree with, I. I disagree.
Says any one of the five can make the motion, any one of the five can second it, just.
Okay, let's do this, just so that we can be inclusive, um, I don't agree with that, but let's, um. If there is, um. Is, is there anyone, is, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion, um, to reconsider? Before we do that, I. Might want the. Player in first, um, look to, who can make this motion. Well, we're gonna be inclusive, so. Well, we're gonna be inclusive, so.
Okay, well, I will move for, uh, motion for reconsideration.
Okay, um, so, um, we have a motion, uh, vetted to, uh, to grant reconsideration. Uh, we have a second. Motion's been made, it was a synthetic, that if we follow that paradigm, we'll require a second to actually, uh, we stage a vote. In the absence of that, the motion, um, the motion fails by lack of second. Expires, any seconds? Respect me? Do you wanna just say yes or no, just so that?
No.
Just so, just. Just one, no, um, the scout?
I think it's just the five.
Mr. Chairman. I was not involved in time, Mr. Pecan, it is but the moving party, um, so that's just Mr. Spontan, no. Uh, and myself, uh, no.
Yes.
She has under vote, yeah, so we've done. For the record and, and posterity and all those, with due respect, apologies for what may appear to be, um. A little bit, a little, a little bit unwieldy, but it is our best effort to try to be as credible as possible and as inclusive. As possible under the circumstances, uh, so, um, that was why we've done it twice, both ways. Alright, um, anything further on the draft decision? We don't need to, we need to undertake that and.
I set it out, if there's edits, um.
We can send that.
Yeah, can we, we're not gonna do that live, we'll do that, you, you may have just let, um. Put it playing on snow and let it. The paper mill is over the same year, I do our other updates, um. And so, uh, with that, we, we're in the business this evening, thank you guys, and we have motion returned.
Almost.
Second, I don't favor. I, we're both, no votes, extension, the outs have it, motion carries, meeting is adjourned, and, um. Anyone still?